All set? Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting of January 3, 2018. I hope everybody had a happy new year and wish you all a healthy 2018. Tonight, we've got a few things to go over as the Board of Selectmen, and then we'll be meeting with the Finance Committee in about 45 minutes. But in the meantime, we're going to go through some of our own posted business. First up, we have some minutes from some various meetings. If anybody wants to make a motion, excuse me, we can take care of that. We have the minutes of June 29, November 21, and December 12. We can either do them individually or as a group, depending if anybody had any questions on a particular seven minutes.
I just had questions on the 12th.
Okay, so why don't we then do the first two?
Sure.
And then we'll make the motion, and then we can under discussion. We can talk about the 12th. Pardon me? Three sets, yeah. So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June 29, 2017. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of November 21, 2017. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December 12. Is there a second? And then we can discuss it under...
Second for discussion?
Yeah.
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on those minutes?
Yeah, just a couple. I was remembering a little differently. When we spoke with the Finance Committee on that date, I felt that all eight of us were in agreement that the accountant, and it does refer to this later down in about paragraph seven, was going to be getting clerical help with the money that was left in that fund, which I believe Ms. Ryder asked what the amount was, and she was told it was a little over $3,200. No, it was more at that time. Then it was found to be $3,200. So I didn't see anywhere in here. We just said he needed help, but we discussed it. And everyone said we were on the same page. Yes, that you were going to look into hiring someone to help him. And I didn't see that in here.
I'm sorry, what was that, about the $3,200?
Well, I understand that's what was left, but you had given an amount that day when Ms. Ryder asked you what was left in there. And everyone in the room, I was understanding, agreed. And in fact, the words that were used were on the same page.
Right, that I would look into.
That you were going to get him some help, yes.
Right, right.
And I don't see that in here. And curious as to where that stands right now and why that wasn't reflected.
Well...
He's going to talk to you since then. You talked about an intern as opposed to clerical help. And I wanted to know, has it changed?
It would be clerical help.
Right, has it... Well, an intern isn't really trained, right? Or has any experience yet at this point?
Well, it's clerical support. I had inquired with the UMass Accounting Department. They have an intern co-op program.
Yeah, I think we're getting ahead, but I'm just looking at the minutes so we can accept the minutes, though. But I was curious as to why it wasn't in there when, you know, that we agreed. If that was missed, I'd love to have that in there, that's all. That we were going to look at it for clerical help for the accountant.
If I may. I believe that the conversation that evening was regarding clerical help. And I think everybody's heads were bobbing up and down that, yes, we need it. But no, we did not take a vote of any sort that evening to move ahead and do it. Is that what you meant?
Right, that came up, and it said we don't need to, because I think it was said that we don't need to, because everyone was on the same page, is I believe what you said.
My takeaway was that it was supported. It was supported. The idea was supported to look into.
And to find out the information and then come back with a concrete solution for the Board of Selectmen who would have to vote on.
See, I thought that was a solution.
Send the lights on your bed.
Oh, thanks. I thought that was the solution, that we were going to get clerical help, because all the help has gone so far to the Treasurer's office and nothing to the accountant's office. So that was the agreement, I thought. So I just wanted to make sure either I'm clear or the minutes are clear, either one.
Okay.
So if somebody can clarify that for me, because I thought that was, we decided, Betsy Ryder had said to you, so you're going to look into that.
So we'll have to look back at the minutes that were taken or look at the video. We can do that. We can take a look at the...
Because I thought for sure that's what we were doing, and it just, because it's been going on for so long.
Okay.
And I thought we had finally come to a decision.
Well, if there was...
The accountant was going to get clerical help. People in the audience, I think it was Carrie and Bob, both said they agreed with it. And then all of us agreed on it. There was a question about a vote. Everybody said we're all on the same page.
All right.
And you were supposed to look at hiring someone.
If there was a vote, we'll look back at the video. If there was a vote, we'll make sure that that's reflected in the minutes.
There was not a vote.
Right, but there was.
There was not a vote.
But there wasn't. We said we're all on the same page. Yes, let's do it.
But we need a vote to, the Board of Selectmen need to vote to actually hire somebody, whether it's temporary or not, to expend the funds. So I believe the minutes are correct. And under old business on tonight's agenda, we actually are talking about on topic number seven. Follow-up discussion regarding administrative support for accounting is actually on our agenda tonight. So that may be a better spot to have the conversation, whereas this is just the acceptance of the minutes.
Okay, so stand by on the minutes, then. Okay, and I was also looking to see if there was a vote on page, the next to last page, the last paragraph and the third to the last paragraph. I thought there was a vote on custodial services and/or a janitor. I thought we had voted on that also.
All right, let me see. I believe there was.
There was, the last paragraph, I think.
Yeah, there is a vote at the bottom of that page.
Yeah, the last paragraph.
Right, that's, yeah, that's on my...
The second to the last page, there is a vote.
Okay. Yeah, I have that one marked, but I didn't see it as that, as the way I read it. I probably read that one wrong, though, but it does look like the vote's in there. Thank you. And you don't have to look for the vote for the other one, because I didn't think there was a vote on the other one.
Okay, well, they said, I don't mind.
But I thought we were clear as to the direction that everybody... No, you don't have to go. It clears the direction that it was going to go, because I left here, and I think everybody I spoke to that was in the audience that day left here saying, "Okay, they're finally going to get some help in there. You're hiring someone." And then it didn't happen. So that's why I wanted clarification on that, and I couldn't find it in here.
Okay.
So I'm hoping we can make that more clear if we're going on from there.
Mm-hmm.
And so we can discuss that later. All right, thank you.
All right.
So there's been a motion made and seconded for the approval of the December 12 minutes. Are you all set with that now?
I'm all set, yeah, thanks.
All right, so is there any further discussion?
Makes it clearer? No.
All right, you're all set, Ed? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay. So for the townspeople who have not caught wind of this or heard rumors flying or anything else, we are looking to hold a special town meeting the end of January. We'll be discussing that in much further detail once the Finance Committee is here in a little while. But I just wanted to give a high-level overview. And Marlene, correct me if I say anything incorrectly. So at this time, our accountant and treasurer, in working with Justin Cole, who's been the consultant that has been working with us for a number of months now, and working with the DOR, Department of Revenue, it appears that we have a $305,000 fiscal year 2018 shortfall or deficit. So in order for the town to be able to properly set the tax rate and to send out the tax bills, we have got to transfer monies and/or cut budgets to make up that $305,000 deficit. We've got some recommendations that we'll be discussing further with the Finance Committee a little later this evening. But that's the reason for the special town meeting tentatively scheduled for January 24, so we can appropriate those funds either via transfer or working with the Finance Committee to cut budgets. So that's topic one on our posted business, is actually setting the date of the special town meeting. And we wanted to make sure that we gave the townspeople and the town clerk time to pull it all together. So that's the reason for that topic. And at this point, are you looking for a motion at this point, Marlene? Are we...
No, not necessarily at this time.
So we're going to set a date. And then the articles themselves will discuss with the Finance Committee once they're here, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, did anybody, Cindy or Ed, want to...
I just want to add to that, that I think it's really important that we have an explanation on all the items that are in deficit, because I think the town deserves that. So I think we have to go through all these items and ask, why did they show up as a deficit? Some have a very good reason for what I say, but, I mean, we need to be able to present that. That's just my comment on that, that's all.
Agreed. I would add to that that the $305,000 deficit, as it stands now, as being viewed by the Department of Revenue, some of those monies have already been... The paperwork for those, I'm not sure how to say it the right way. So we have, they're not truly a deficit in the sense of some of the capital items. We've been able to figure out where, why it shows as a deficit. But as we'll come out in the conversation later, there's a reason that we're bringing all of it forward, which is the recommendation of our consultant, because he kind of has it queued up with the state to, when they see that $305,000 deficit gone, free cash will be released, tax rates can be set, et cetera, et cetera. And then we can true up on where some of that apparent deficit monies are and then get those back. So it's kind of a very long, convoluted, and difficult process, but it is what it is. Okay. So we're going to wait to discuss that a little more in depth or a lot more in depth once the Finance Committee comes. So we're going to skip. So that's the town meeting date currently, tentatively scheduled for January 24. The warrant itself, which is the next topic on our agenda, we're going to be discussing a little bit later this evening. You'll notice I keep looking at the clock, so in about a half hour. So we're going to move on with our agenda, which is separate from anything to do with the special town meeting or any of those special warrant town items. Sorry, excuse me. Yeah, Marlene, I'm sorry.
Is anybody here for public forum?
I'm sorry, I didn't say anything.
I just noticed it's not...
Is anybody here for public forum? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, got on a roll, thank you. Okay. So we'll go back to that. Marlene, we have signing of a change order certificate of completion with Evergreen Construction. I know, Marlene, Mark Gelot, who's the architect, and in our town council have been working to get some of the outstanding issues resolved to emergency service building behind us.
So we have come to an agreement. In your packet is a copy of the change order and a certificate of substantial completion in addition to an invoice from Evergreen Construction Corporation, which is the balance that the town will pay to Evergreen Construction, which is $24,003.75. So I'd asked the board to approve the change order, which has already been signed by the contractor and the architect and sign the certificate of substantial completion.
Okay. Along those lines, that $24,000 is monies that we've held, our monies that we've held back since the building was completed until these items got resolved. So I didn't, I just wanted to make sure the townspeople didn't think that this was, you know, an additional $24,000. This is work that should have been completed originally.
Right.
It wasn't. It's finally going to get completed, and then we'll release the balance of those, of the funds that had been originally approved for the emergency service building. Right?
Yes.
Cindy, Ed, any other comments on that?
Yes, I mean, I was over there with them, and this has all been agreed to with the architect, with our town council, and with every source. And I think the fire chief was also involved...
Yes, he was.
...in a discussion. And I believe this makes everybody happy.
Okay. Okay, so is there a motion to approve and sign a change order and insert a certificate of completion with Evergreen Construction?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd just like to state, too, that the change order is a credit.
Yes.
Just for the purpose of discussion, that it is a credit.
All right, thank you. All right. I'm sorry, I don't know where this came from. Topic four, we have the approval of a class-two license renewal. Is this something that we just, we did... Oh, thanks. We did numerous licenses last month. Is this just one that we didn't? Okay, but it's all set now? I mean, other than we need to sign it and approve it? So look for a motion to approve the Labby Auto Sales and Service at 24 Lindsay Road. Class-two license renewals?
I'll make a motion to renew the class-two seller's license for 24 Lindsay Road in the name of Labby.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm hesitating as I read through these. So it looks like the balance of these, unless we do some old business, looks like it has to do with meeting with the Finance Committee.
Right, the other, yes. Old business, that can be taken up by the board.
Okay. So for topic seven, goes back to Cindy's earlier comment when we were doing the minute. Is that something we also want to talk about with the Finance Committee? I mean, that's, we got, because we've got to get the funds for...
Right, but last time we discussed it with them, so if you want to continue in the same vein, that might work.
Well, I mean, we could always discuss. We can discuss it with them, and then it would still ultimately, you know, we can vote, we'll still be here at the end of that session.
Sure, we could do that, right.
If you guys are okay.
I mean, at the previous meeting, we did discuss the reasons for the additional support.
Right, but not the sources.
Correct.
Not the funding sources.
Well, yeah, we did discuss it. It was part of that $30,000.
But we, I believe that we haven't gotten, unless it's come in recently, I don't think we've gotten the balance of what's available to us in there. Yeah, I think, so I think what happened that night was, was a number was put out there, but that didn't include other billing that hadn't come in yet. But that is expected, so...
Right, because after the last meeting, there was an additional invoice that came in right after. Yeah, I would say that that's...
Do anything to get on camera.
There may be about $6,000 within that expense budget.
About $6,000?
Why don't we, if it's okay with my colleagues, I'd just as soon discuss it as part of, with the Finance Committee. The last piece, is that all right?
Okay, that's fine. Listen, whatever the board's decision is.
I mean, you know, it's got to be part of... We've done that with the other positions that have taken place. Okay, great. All right. And then topic number eight was discuss a short-term cleaning contract. At our last meeting, the board decided that with the next fiscal year to take another avenue than we currently have, and be that as it may. My concern currently, though, is we are using a cleaning service for this building emergency management whose contract expired three months ago. And by anybody's... I'm not sure how to say it nicely. And what everybody is saying that works in Town Hall, and I'm not, if anybody wants to correct me, that's fine. Folks that work at Town Hall and next door don't think that the cleaning service is doing a satisfactory job. Let's just put it that way. So my take on that is I don't know, even if we're going to change the route we take come town meeting and effective the next fiscal year, my concern is that we continue to pay a company that's providing inadequate service. I mean, I guess that's the bottom line. So my suggestion would be to enter into a short-term cleaning contract, ask Marlene to put out the request for proposals or bids, and see what a company would come in for at six months. I'm just picking six months, even though it would probably be five. But by the time you hired somebody anyways, you'd need that extra time. And send out bids, and then have them, if possible, have them, a different company start on February 1, or somewhere in that timeframe. Get us through February, March, April, May, June, and then July, and then you could have whatever's going to happen be effective August 1 or something. So that is, that's what I would like to do. I just can't see putting good money after bad with the company we have now. Just, it frustrates the heck out of me that they're still receiving taxpayer funds for doing an inadequate job. So I don't know if anybody wants to comment on it, or I should put in a form of motion and get seconded?
I'd like to comment on it, because on, in the last meeting on December 12, we had voted, like you said, to change the way it's handled, to go back to a custodial or janitorial position, an employee. And a lot of things came up. We had Roland here, who was the last janitor we had at the previous meeting, who spoke about it. We had, and if people remember, we had Frank Bonk, Frank Odeck, and we felt that they did an excellent job that by having the custodial one person here, they actually have skin in the game. They can take instruction from people here, et cetera, et cetera. What happened, though, was because it was budgeted to facilities expense, it came up that we would have to have town meeting decide on that in order to put it to a wage expense. But since we're having the special town meeting this month anyway, I said we bring it forward as an article this month. Instead of waiting till June now, and then we don't have to go through a temporary or short-term custodial contract. If it passes, then you can hire somebody this month. Since we're having, it looks like the tentative date for that special town meeting is the 24th, which is just three weeks. So I'd like to propose that we have put that as an article on the warrant, and instead of waiting till June to do it and having to have a contract, look for another company, have another contract, let's go straight to what we had voted on is getting a janitor in place.
So...
Because we were waiting till the May meeting.
Right.
That's why we needed somebody for those six months.
When we put the budget together.
But if we can vote on that in January, the special town meeting, if it goes through, we can hire someone this month and get started on it.
Well, I don't know that we have the details. So I have two comments on that. Excuse me. One would be, I think that the special town meeting should pretty much be to take care of the deficit. That's my first comment. The second one is, I don't know that we have enough right now to pull this off in three weeks. You know, what the true cost is going to be and when. And I'm not trying to circumvent what you guys voted on. I just think, you know, I think it makes more sense to, if we're going to do that moving forward, let's do it when all the budgets from all the departments are being put together at the same time, rather than to try to cherry pick, excuse me, you know, one position now for the sake of four months. I don't know why we just don't. I think it's cleaner to do it that way. And I'd just as soon not add any other expense to the articles we're having. Because we don't know, because we don't know the true cost. We don't know. And we don't know when the hiring's going to take place. We don't know any of that. In the meantime, we're still paying this other company to come do inadequate service.
On a month-by-month basis, because their contract was up in October, and we've been discussing this since September. And we did go over the costs the last two meetings. There was a lot of discussion about the costs and how, you know, some of us thought it would be less to hire one person and not go with another custodial company that we've been having difficulties with. So I don't understand why you want to hire one for another six months. We voted to do this.
Because...
It's not going to take, to have one more article on the warrant for the town, special town meeting, I don't see where that's going to cost anything different. You're still going to be paying a custodial service one way or the other. And most of us believe that a single janitor is going to be a less expensive tract of doing it. That's why we voted for it.
Boy, those aren't the numbers we got at the last meeting. It was going to be $10,000 more a year to have a custodian.
What numbers?
If you, with the benefits. The numbers that we were given by the treasurer.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You just said we didn't talk the numbers.
It was looking to be between $42,000 and $45,000.
We weren't talking about a full-time position, Brian. We were talking about $25,000 a week.
It didn't matter. When you did the math at what the hourly rate was, times 30, and add the benefits, that was the number that the treasurer ran.
Your contract right now is over $40,000. When you figure, and then you're not getting the ramps cleaned, you're not getting the sidewalks taken care of. You've got to bring in DPW to do that, so...
And you still have to do that.
And they pay, they pay additional money, so that $40,000. But my question on what you're proposing, I see both sides. On what you're proposing, how do you know if you went out the contract with the existing money that's in the budget for the rest of the year in a DPW line item, how do you know it's going to come in under what's in there? What if it comes over for the next four or five months? Then what do we do?
Well, you do the bidding process. And if the bids don't come in to meet what you want, then you rebid it. That's what we're doing now.
But we've already voted to change, so let's do it. If that's what the vote was, then that's what we follow with. Why are we getting another company in here?
Because the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee go over the budgets together. The Finance Committee's not weighed in on this decision at all.
Right, and your reason five minutes ago was because we didn't discuss any numbers. And all of a sudden, you go, "Well, what about the $10,000? That's not the right number." If we didn't discuss any numbers, where did you pull that $10,000 out of?
What are you talking about?
Five minutes ago, your excuse was, "We didn't discuss any numbers on this. We shouldn't go to..."
We haven't discussed the final...
And now you said, "Oh, yes, we did. It's $10,000 more."
No, you guys came up with a minimum...
So we either did or we didn't discuss numbers. Five minutes ago, you said we didn't. Now you're saying we did, and it was $10,000 more.
We discussed a figure that was proposed.
What figure was that?
I think it was $16, it was $16 an hour, right? Didn't we discuss that? Didn't we discuss that?
I'm asking, you said we didn't talk any numbers, and then you said we did.
We talked a couple of figures. We talked 15, we talked 16. We talked about what the school was making on, on entry level. We talked 20 hours, we talked 25 hours, we talked possibly 30 hours.
So there you go. How are we going to have an article to transfer money when you don't know who you're hiring or what?
Well, actually, it would be nice...
Well, do you know what company you want to hire for the next six months?
No, that's why we put it out to bid.
So what's the difference? You don't know who you'd have as a single person, you don't know who you'd have as a contractor for six months. And since we voted to have the single person, that seems to be the route we should go, since that's what we voted for.
Rather than going through a facilities director who's in charge of the facilities, but that's okay.
Well, that's, the problem with this contract is it hasn't been overseen properly. We've got a stack of emails of problems in this building, and, and that's been part of the problem. I don't believe the DPW facilities director has been doing a really good job as far as taking care and being on top of the contractor. So this is where some of the problems are coming from. And the last discussion I had with the DPW director, I did not get a warm feeling that he was putting on all-out effort to stay on top of, of the contractor...
Well, the contractor's under...
And getting stuff done.
Isn't the contractor under a contract? Well, they were under a contract, but they have what they should be doing for cleaning services. You know, clean this, dust that, change that. I mean, how many times do you have to tell them?
It doesn't get done.
They should have been fired. Never mind having to keep paying them, but whatever.
But, but their side of the story was the DPW director would never return their calls when they asked if there was things to be needed. And I was here the day, I was here the day before 11 o'clock when the DPW director, facilities director, and the town administrator, and a representative from that company was supposed to meet at 11 o'clock. And he was here about five minutes or 10 minutes of 11, and at 11 o'clock, he was not here, and he was supposed to be at that meeting. So there has been no feedback to that company in their defense, and I'm not saying they did a good job at all. I'm saying that they're saying they got no feedback from him, and I was here the day he was supposed to meet with them and did not.
They've had plenty of feedback, Cindy, for months. It goes back months. Jenny, did you want to say something?
Do you have emails to support that?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to ask...
Marlene, talk to them. I don't need emails. I got the town administrator.
The facilities director overseeing him like he's supposed to, not the town administrator.
Go ahead, Jenny.
All I'm saying is, I work in the building, and to come in here weeks after week after week and not have a clean bathroom to use...
Yes.
They're continuing to get paid. That's a problem, and it needs to be addressed regardless if it's now. We're not waiting six months, and that goes with everybody that works in this building. It's disgusting.
It is disgusting, and that's why I'm saying, "We voted to change that, so let's do it. We have an opportunity to bring it before the town this month." What is the objection to that, so we can get somebody new in here?
Chairman?
So I was one of the randomers, so to, to both of your points, I wish that we could, as somebody who works in the building, wish that we could solve it quickly, but we have to make some definite decisions. Are we going to do 50? Are we going to do 60? And I just, knowing that I'm here every day, we have a lot on our plates that's a problem. So a little worried about tackling one more thing. At the same time, whether you have the person at 25 or 30 hours or 22, anything over 20 is a full-time position in terms of benefits. You have to offer the health insurance, which is why it costs us so much more to have a single person versus a contract. You guys voted what you voted, you have your program to do that. But just remember that, that when you talk about even 25 hours, it still has the, you have to factor in health insurance, which is the big cost of having to do a point. So that's where we have to make those decisions, are, okay, what do we want for these hours? But those numbers were numbers that came from the person who does your payroll for you every week, so they're, they're pretty solid numbers that they're, if you do it at 30 hours, is what the numbers I ran, that they will cost you about $10,000 more than our cleaning service. That's where Brian's numbers came from, that he was referred to. So there's, there's some give and take there.
Yes, you ran it at 30 hours?
Sorry.
Okay, and I believe you said 20 hours? Is that correct?
We said between 25 or 30, depending. And, and we also talked about making flexible, maybe if there's a snowstorm, then they come in for the extra hours to do the ramps and, and do the sidewalks. If there's not a storm, they may not need to be that many hours. But, but right now, I mean, contracting out custodial service has been nothing but a pain in the butt in this building, because it doesn't work, and it hasn't worked in a few years to what I've been told by everybody that works in here. So I mean, if you want to go along the path, okay, we'll contract another six months, then unless the DPW facilities director enforces the contract and makes sure the job's getting done, the building's not going to get done, because you're going to have the same thing, you're going to have different people constantly coming in from the big company, and maybe get lucky and get somebody that's good. But I mean, okay, so, so we're down to the bottom of two things. We're either, one party's saying, okay, let's wait until town elections to do this and keep it separate from, from this issue of getting the $300,000, or we want to try to see if we put it on the town special meeting for January. So that's where we're at now, right, basically?
Yeah, and I think, with no pun intended, I think it's cleaner to keep it separate. I think that we've got a lot of talk and explaining to do, rightfully so, when we go with the town meeting, with the articles.
And on one side, my fear is if you put it out to bid, it may come in higher than what you're presently paying. But I mean, if that happens, then we throw that bid out, we keep going through the process. But we're talking short-term if we go that way, only under the conditions that there's, there's some...
Based upon available funding, you know, whatever, whatever that caveat is that you put in most contracts. It also gives, as we're going through the entire budget process with the Finance Committee and the various departments' line items, it gives everyone a chance to weigh in on it, like we do with every department, you know, whether it's the school department or a DPW or whoever, to make comments and, and have the discussion as to why it, it is the way it is or should be the way it was voted on or what have you. But, excuse me. I mean, that's how I'm, that's how I'm looking at it. I, I think the input from the Finance Committee's important. I think as we're looking to...
Well, we can ask them tonight.
Just from an actual perception, you know, we're going to ask townspeople to cover $305,000 deficit with transfers, and at the same time, we're going to ask them to put on a full-time employee onto the payroll. I mean, I, you know, I don't know how...
We're not talking full-time. Frank, come on.
Financially, it's full-time.
We're not talking full-time.
Whatever.
We've been discussing this since September.
It's, it's a hired employee versus contracted services, so I'll start using hired employee. So we're going to hire an employee, and we don't know the hours yet, so it's tough to fund it when you don't know the hours and you don't know the benefits, you don't know who's hired. So that's the reasoning to go, in my opinion, with a short, six-term, excuse me, six-month contract. Bottom line, we should not be paying the current company another penny, and we should get out of that as soon as we can.
The last two companies were not satisfactory. It hasn't been satisfactory since we did have a janitor, in my opinion. And is it really going to take six months to figure out how much you're going to pay a janitor and how many hours? I mean, we've been discussing this since September, and, and that's why nothing gets done. It's like, okay, well, I don't like the decision on that, so I'm going to put it off another six months or this. Nothing gets done.
The vote was last month, Cindy. The vote was last month.
We've been discussing it since September. Their contract was up in October.
We have been discussing, yes, that we have been, but the, the current way of, of moving forward was last month.
So your fear would be is if we're going to town, special town meeting, and we're requesting 305, and then on top of that, we're requesting custodial make cause, then you may be talking about causing more disruption and not having a complete game plan.
I can't predict the future, but, but, but yeah. When you have a special town meeting, in my opinion, it should be, this is why we're doing it. And for me, the reason we're doing this is to take care of this $305,000 deficit. It's not to throw something out. We had a very legitimate question on doing something else in town from a group of residents, and had the same, a similar conversation, and it didn't change the outcome. So whether they were a part of the special town meeting or they were a May town meeting, it wasn't going to change the outcome of that, you know what I mean?
Well, how do we ensure, whether we, if we do a short-term contract, that the facilities manager is going to stay on top of the company and, and follow up on issues? I mean, that's another issue here. If, if issues are not being addressed, why are not, why are they not being addressed? And, and what actions should we be taking to say, "Hey, you got to get on top of this and do this?"
I don't disagree with you.
And because that's been part of, that's been half of the problem. If that was done, there probably would not be these issues. There's no way they should come in and have dirty bathrooms in the morning.
No.
There should be, they, this stuff should be done, you know, and it's...
Yeah.
And...
There should be a daily, you know, schedule.
That's the other part of this issue, right?
Right.
So it's been going on this way for how, how many years now? We're going to maybe wave a magic wand, and all of a sudden, the facilities director's going to say, "Yep, I'll have contact with them all the time." It's not working. That's why we voted to do something different. I think we're more than ready. Everything gets put off. Every meeting we have, there's stuff getting put off, and nothing gets done.
Well, things do get done. Sometimes it's getting things in the right place to get them done. That's the problem with government. You got to...
And have the correct conversation with the people that are part of it, as I've alluded to numerous times. You know, the, the Finance Committee, when, when we talk about spending money...
We're meeting with the Finance Committee in three minutes.
But we're talking about this now.
Right, and there's three other items you put out, you waited on to discuss with the Finance Committee at 18:30, so might as well make it four.
So this was brought up under old business, which is why we're discussing it.
Right, and that's why we discussed the other items that someone's put off.
Especially once the Finance Committee's here.
It sounds like a good idea.
And they're going to want to know how much it's going to cost.
I'd ask a question.
Sure.
If, if there was a warrant article dealing with this issue on the special town meeting, what would that warrant article be for? For transferring money from contracted services to...
Wages.
...the employment line item?
Yes.
Mr., I can read it to you.
Yes.
Jerome Morty already asked where the money would come from to pay this salary. Currently, there is no money for wages for a janitor. He said the only way to move, is to move funds from the facilities expense line to a wage line at town meeting. So I'm saying, good, let's do it. I think the people here are smart enough to figure out, we're going to have two articles on the warrant instead of one. I mean, what's one more article?
Five articles, Cindy.
Okay, so what's one more? You said you just wanted the 305.
Can Mike speak, please?
Do you think it would not be possible or feasible that you leave the money where it is and not require a warrant article on the special town meeting to perhaps, you know, diversify that problematically? And evaluate or determine whether or not there is an individual or individuals out there that might be willing to, on an individual basis, be an independent contractor for six months, after which time you could consider, based on their six-month trial period, hiring that person as an employee.
Well, I asked that question similar to what you're saying, and the answer I'm getting is that money in the line item is only for contractual services. That's what I'm told.
So you would contract with that person as an independent contractor?
Right, but Mike, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't be that selective when you put the service out to bid, you're advertising a, for a vendor. It could be one person that responds, but it could be a company that responds.
Sure, right.
Right.
But, but it's possible that you would get...
Whoever, it's based on whoever meets the specification and is the low bidder.
Right.
Just because a, a person is a sole contractor is not a reason to award that bid to the individual.
Or not, or not award that bid along that same, yeah. Thanks.
That's, that's the problem.
Well, it, it's not a problem necessarily if somebody...
Because, on the one hand, doing that would accomplish what Brian is, is saying, which is, let's go out to bid and see if we can get someone who would contract with us for a six-month period of time. Within that, within that group of applicants, there may very well be, if it's promoted as such, an independent contractor who happens to be an individual who is aware of the fact that this is a six-month contracted position, if you will, and that at some point, it could lead to a, a more permanent benefited position. That's all I'm saying. And, and you won't have to worry about transferring money from one account to another at a special town meeting in order to do that.
Right, to accomplish that.
Yeah.
Now, I, I do feel a little concerned if we bring more than one item to special town meeting, that it may cause more problems, because I know there's going to be unhappiness about the deficit to begin with, and, and there's going to be some voices and concern of why we have the deficit and, and how did we get there. So that one point of adding more stuff may, may or may not cause uneasiness. I'm not sure.
Now, did you say there's already five articles on the warrant, though?
Well, that's, four or five, that was what Cindy...
Four or five already.
What, they're separate, they're separate, whether, because you have to do separate...
Those are all part of the money.
Where they're coming from.
They're all, they're related to...
They're all part of the money, transferring money from one account to another, so...
Yep. Edwina?
Brian, I, I understand that we've went out to bid before, and we've got two or three people, vendors, to come in with bids for a year's contract. If we approached them for the six months, is there somebody in that group that might serve us well?
There could be.
We have to put it out to bid.
I think we should, I was going to say, I think we should probably, I would imagine the same people, Edwina, would, would apply, but basically, we're going to do the bidding process through, through Marlene, so we're, we're going to start from scratch, just to... Thank you, though. I, I like that idea. One of whom, by the way, if I'm not mistaken, was actually an individual.
Oh, this past time?
This past time. So maybe they'd be interested again, to Mike's point, so thanks.
Yeah, there was one individual. Oh, no, actually, there were two, two separate quotes submitted. They were individuals.
So, so what do you want to do? You want to wait and talk about this with the Finance Committee?
Let's wait for the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, well, okay, so under the Board of Selectmen, do you guys have anything before we meet with the Finance Committee, as far as anything that's left on the agenda? I think everything else has to do with, with them. Just because I'm going to ask John to take a five-minute break, so everybody can get in a position. So the meeting that we're having with the Finance Committee shortly really is the Finance Committee's meeting, and they've asked the Board of Selectmen to join them for that, right, Marlene?
Correct.
Is that, do I have that?
That is correct.
So, so when we come back, we'll be handing it over to, to the Finance Committee to, to run the remainder of the, of the meeting. So, John, if you don't mind, why don't we take five minutes? Thanks.
We'll never be. Okay, so this is now a meeting of the Finance Committee that the Selectmen are obviously a part of this, and we haven't met for about a month or so, and so we, as a Finance Committee, wanted to get together with the Select Board and the rest of the financial team was here and discuss a little bit of background of what's happened in the past month and a half, talk about special town meeting, the breakdown of the $305,000. So I would like to make sure that everybody on the Finance Team understands what comprises that number, where it comes from, and then, so I guess let's, let's start with that. So, because, and I'll, I'll give you my synopsis of the $305,000, and then I'm hoping Marlene, Brian, and the rest of the gang will kick in, Derek, Laura Lee. So when we, we met with DOR, and this is going back in early December with, with Justin, and that's where we came up with that 305. It's comprised of snow and ice, which, do you have a breakdown of that? Which is 37, no...
Forty, $145,000.
$145,000. Yeah, it's that one right there. Hundred, yeah, $145,000 that were in deficit of that. That one is barely, well, it's not completely understandable, but anyway, and then we have some cherry sheet offsets. So some other things, I, I know the inspector's budget, we kind of double-counted that with the revolving fund and then on the expense line, and so we've, we've taken a hit on that. And so I guess I want to start with snow and ice, and, and just for our sake, Marlene, can you explain what we all missed last year? Just, you know, we talked about snow and ice. Every year, we, it, it, it comes off the recap sheet.
Right, it's reported on the recap.
Reported on the recap. It's part of that. We've done that traditionally. It's worked well in this town for, for, for many years, and I think it will continue. I had a discussion with the DPW Director, who talked to several surrounding towns, that all are pretty much doing the same type of, I'll call it deficit spending, budgeting to, to make it work. But we obviously missed something this year, or last year, that I just want to make sure we don't miss again, and did we not put it on the recap? Or where was, where was the problem with that?
My understanding, it is added on the recap.
It is.
It is. Where it wasn't added was the workbook that we work on when we're developing the budget.
Right.
There's a state and other charges page of the workbook.
Yep, further down.
Right, and there's two fiscal year columns. So we had fiscal year '17 and then fiscal year '18. Fiscal year '17, we report what the actual numbers are.
Right.
Fiscal year '18, we estimate those numbers.
Right.
We knew that the, we, we were aware of a deficit with snow and ice, I believe we did, at the end of fiscal year '17. However, we did not raise that in the fiscal year '18 column. We plugged in a number of $35,000. DOR's argument is if you look at your history and you're, you have an average of $70,000, that's the number you should be plugging in. You shouldn't plug in $35,000. If you're spending $70,000, $80,000, you need to report, your, your estimate should be a little more accurate. That is not an accurate number.
But if, if I may?
Please.
But that's not the issue with this.
No.
That's our way forward.
That's our way forward.
This money never got taken off of where I believe it should be, which is normally when we get our yearly free cash amount. This money normally comes right off the top, so it never, so let's just say we were going to get $500,000. This 145, when we got our free cash, would have been $355,000, if I'm not mistaken. Is that how it works?
It's part of the recap.
Yeah, but we didn't get free cash.
It's taken off the recap.
So we didn't get free cash. That's why we didn't, that's why it wasn't taken off.
We did get some free cash.
But, but not...
Right.
Not the, not the fiscal year.
We didn't account for it.
We didn't account for it, is the bottom line, correct.
Right, and, and that's okay. I mean, you're not, I just...
No, no.
Doing, bringing that, that, just as an understanding?
I agree, Derek.
Because I just want to make sure we don't do it again, and I know what you said with DOR and, you know, I, you know, maybe we budget a little higher for 2019, but there seems to be a lot of cities and towns that are doing exactly the same thing that we're doing.
Over 300. And it's, it's the only line item, I believe, that the state actually allows you to deficit spend, which is why the cities and towns take advantage of it, because you don't want to lower other departments' budgets...
Right.
...this year, that you might spend in snow and ice, or may not, and then have that money, if you don't spend, to go back to free cash, versus when you get the bill next year for the real amount, that's when you pay it.
Isn't there another reason where if you overestimate, then you can't go back or something? There was some...
That is in there also.
That is in there, and that's why we...
That's the reason.
Well, that's a reason two or a number.
That's why we keep that estimate pretty conservative.
Right, like any other money you would move at the end of the year, if it's unspent.
No.
No.
What would happen to it?
If it's, if it's in snow, and that was, so say we budgeted $100,000 for snow and ice, and we only spent $75,000?
Yeah.
That money would just fall to free cash.
Okay.
And so the argument, which I think is a good one, is why are we going to tie up that money when we don't have to tie up that money?
Right, I think also if you don't expend all your, I'm, Derek and Marlene, whoever can correct me, I, I also believe that, let's just say again, we use the $100,000 amount, and next month, if we had only spent 50 of it at that point, so we had 50 left, and then there was this humongous blizzard that came through, that Mimas, Mima and FEMA and others came in and declared an emergency, I think you can get, I don't want to say it's free fund, but lower...
Yes, this is, it's true.
I'm not saying it right, though, Laura Lee. So, so you're, you're entitled to get...
You'd be entitled to more aid.
More aid, unless you have not spent down your current budget.
That's right. Phil did tell me that the other day. If there's a, if tomorrow's storm turns out to be a three-foot storm, and then FEMA allocates money, and we haven't spent all our money, we cannot get the FEMA money.
Correct, right.
I guess this is what's sort of odd to me about municipal accounting, though. Sort of what a weird, you know, practice is like, let's not actually put what we're, think we're actually going to spend, because we don't need to, and this department can have more money, but this is our budget, and our budget should reflect what we reasonably think we're going to spend, almost no matter what. I don't think FEMA events, when it comes to snow, are that, that common, anyway. So I, and I do think that we shouldn't have it necessarily be sort of the worst-case scenario, but certainly closer to what the mark is going to be, you know, maybe, you know, 80, 85% of what we spend on average, which would still leave a deficit likely on a, on a tough year.
I agree with you, Sean, that, you know, you, I think you need to be a little closer to the mark, but you certainly want to be cautious, and you don't want to overestimate, to your point, that, you know, you don't want to just leave money on the table, but I think that we need to, to be a little bit closer. And, and I don't think that this is something that we can just put in place in FY19 and fix it. This is going to be probably a five-year, you know, add a little bit each year to get us to wherever that mark is that we want to hit. I, I, I don't think you, I don't think we'd be able to do it in one year's budget. I think it's going to have to be a, a longer...
Right.
...period to get us to where we need to be, if, if that's the, where we all want to go.
Right, and so you're talking about the weirdness of municipal, just wait, it gets, it gets weirder.
Mike, a question, as a layperson, I have to ask this question.
We're all laypeople.
Right, but you guys are closer to the situation than I am. Is the, is the issue that, that we didn't count for that $145,000 deficit to the DOR such that our following years cherry sheet did not reflect a deduction of that money, which is usually, as I recall, what happens? Is, is that the issue? Because it's not, I mean, we've been accounting this way for years.
Yep.
And what usually happens is that whatever deficit we have in snow and ice, there's a reduction by the state on our cherry sheet, okay, for, in this case, $145,000. But what, is, is the issue that we did not report to the state last year that we had $145,000 deficit, snow and ice?
No.
So what, what's the issue?
The issue is a simple accounting issue on, on the spreadsheet that we work with that we collectively all missed. Nobody, nobody saw it. We knew, because we asked the question last year during budgeting, have we accounted for snow and ice? We were pretty sure we had, we knew we had $145,000, that that was the actual number, and we just missed that mark, you know, and...
So we overestimated revenue, $145,000 in the budgeting process?
No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't...
Well, we didn't, we underestimated expenses.
We underestimated expenses, that's all.
Remember, the state withheld our free cash substantially, so that's, that was the point at which it got...
Right, yeah, because in some years, even if we had made that mistake, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we had had enough room in the levy limit, if we had had $145,000 in the levy, they would have just simply taken it from the levy. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
But we didn't have that in the levy.
No, I've not, yeah.
Yeah.
We're not even close to having that.
No, 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 and, but, but, but in some years, in some towns, anyway. And so again, I'm, you know, it's, it's, it's a collective...
Perfect storm.
Perfect storm. We missed it, we just want to make sure we don't do it again.
And I, and we can move, well, it's your meeting. I mean, we can move on beyond that unless somebody has a question. All I would say is, so, so for those in the audience here, and those in the audience at home, we have to make up the $145,000, but it, it wasn't a, it's a deficit, but you know what I mean? It wasn't an overrun budget in the current fiscal year type thing. It was, it was, the, the accounting didn't take place for it collectively...
Didn't account for it.
...the way we should have. So, so that explains roughly half of the $305,000.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead, Cindy has a question.
I just had one quick question. Are we sure that, that whole 145 is all snow and ice? Or it's, it's all, it's all attributed to the right accounts?
Yep.
And I just wanted to comment also on the FEMA thing. The last time we got money from that was 2011. It was almost $20,000, and we had an opportunity since then, but now they're determining, it's not even by town, it's by area, so if there's not enough damage, you get nothing. So even if you get quite a bit of damage, maybe the next, the rest of the county didn't, so that's a lot less likely to get.
Get that, right.
It was 2011, last year.
So, so next, pretty, pretty, the inspection, Wade, the inspection accounted for the next a portion of that, and that, again, was another accounting issue, and my recommendation personally, when we start budgeting for 2019, is that we get rid of that inspection revolving fund. I don't, I don't think we need that. I think we can do it all through inspections.
Stanley?
Darrell, stepping back on the snow and ice expenses and the wages, and to Mike's point, do we carry insurance?
Well, for that, no. Alls I know about insurance is several years ago, Northampton carried insurance for it, and it didn't work for that.
Oh, for the deficit spending?
For the deficit, yeah. And, and my understanding is it did not work, and they have not done it since.
And, and there was, no, that's okay. And there was no money in 2015, 16 with the major storms that we had?
For what?
Ice and snow, or anything to make up these?
No, 2015 and 2016, we accounted for it properly.
Okay. I know that we applied for it in Worcester and got a very large amount of money.
Yeah, I...
For clearing snow.
Phil is very good about if there's money available on big storms, he goes and get it. When I served on the board, it was back when we had some pretty heavy winters, and, you know, maybe like Cindy says, the FEMA is not as apt, apt to give money, but he's always looking, so...
Since 2011, other parts of the state have gotten it. It's usually further east than here.
Right.
But nothing since then.
So when, when did we discover that we were this far in the hole on ice and snow?
We, we figured that out in December, when, when...
It was in December.
We learned of it in December.
We learned of it in December, when, when Justin, Derek, Laura, had, had put together, you know, working on '17, they came up with that in trying to set a tax rate. They, they found that to be in deficit, went to DOR, and, and then we'll talk about some of these other, other things that were part of that.
So was that done through miscategorizing? Because you discovered it in December, but yet you wouldn't have used any sand and salt or, or anything since January of the beginning of the fiscal year. I mean, we went through a whole winter and then a whole summer.
That's, this is fiscal year '17?
We're talking about fiscal year '17.
That's fiscal year '17.
Last winters.
Okay, right, that's what I'm saying, last winters.
Oh, okay.
So you went through last winter, then you went through a whole summer, and now we're sitting here, and it's like we haven't spent anything in ice and snow for an entire summer, and then all of a sudden, it's like, oh, you know, that, that money hadn't, hasn't moved since, that money was in the hole since probably April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December.
As of July 1st, it was, but it, and, and Justin, who just got here, can probably, I asked him that same question, and until you start going through the process, and Justin, hopefully I got this right, of, of setting a tax rate and, and getting the final figures, that's when they discovered, discovered that we, we had missed that and we were in deficit. Derek, Justin, did I explain that correctly? Thank you. Okay, so inspection services, that's, that's pretty, that was pretty easy.
Darrell, can you explain that a little bit more?
Which part?
The inspection services. So that account, I know it involves a revolving fund.
Yeah.
Which, which fees are collected based on inspections by the various inspectors, and they go into a revolving fund? Okay.
Yeah.
And then there's also a line item on our regular budget for expenses or whatever for that area.
Inspections, yep.
So, so how did this, what was not accounted for? The income? The fees that were being collected? Is that why this account is in deficit?
This account's in deficit because the revolving fund was set up to pay for additional inspections. If you go to one inspection, it's covered by...
The original budget.
The original budget.
On the expense line.
The inspectors get compensated for those additional inspections.
Right.
When they were compensated, they were paid for out of the budget, not out of the revolving fund. That's, that's what this $1,500 is.
Yeah, and it's only $1,500.
Right.
It's not, not, not talking big, big money here.
And the solution for this is going to be take the money out of the revolving fund and put it into the...
No.
To away with it.
The solution, the, the, the solution is we have to raise that to, to make up the deficit, and then going forward, we'll just make sure that money is accounted for in the expense side of things.
So why can't you transfer that money out of the revolving account?
Well, that's a question that I have. If we're going to abolish the revolving fund, can we reappropriate those funds? There's $70,000 in there.
That's where it should have been taken out of the origin, for the first place, right?
Right, that's where it was supposed to be paid, correct.
Why can't we use that money to offset this deficit, which is...
Right, and, and I think we will, and again, I'm just an option, speaking out of, I think we will eventually get those kind of things figured out, but let's remember the goal right now is that we need to set a tax rate so that we can, we can move forward. The $305,000, which all this is a part of, we're going to find a lot of that money. We've already found some of it. There were a couple of projects done at the school, the band room and the windows that were report, that are reported to be in deficit. Well, they're not. That's being, but this, and hopefully I say this right, Marlene, what the state wants us to do is to figure out the deficit, the $305,000 appropriated at town meeting.
Correct.
Move forward so that we can set a tax rate and keep going, then...
Finish the audits.
Then, then by the end of January, which hopefully we're on schedule for, we close fiscal year '17. Once that is closed, then we bring in the auditors, right? The auditors are tentatively planned for February. Once that takes place, and this DOR approves it, then our free cash will be certified at probably a, a good enough number to make up some, some of the, some of this. Did I say this right, Brian?
It sounds correct, it sounds right to me. All I would add to that is I believe what will go into or be added to that free cash number are those amounts that you just alluded to, such as the band room and the windows, because once all the accounting aspect of this is completed... And I, I had mentioned this when our meeting opened earlier tonight, before you guys were here, we've already identified some of that $305,000 and understand it's not really a deficit, but the state wants that as a whole cleaned up as the 305. That's a recommendation of our finance team and our consultant, wipe out the 305, and then whatever monies can come back, will, will come back when everybody sees that $305,000 deficit gone.
Right.
Right?
I guess it begs the question, where's the 305 coming from?
You just, you gotta wait, Mike. Let us move on.
I'm just saying, some of that...
Well, we know where 145 is, right?
Right.
Our 210.
Well, I think Mike's question is how are we going to pay for it right now, but...
Well...
And Mike, that's, you know, at that level of detail, I was at, you know, could we, could we use the, the revolving fund as a source of revenue in that article?
I do not believe that that will be able to happen by January 28th.
Fourth.
All right, go ahead.
When, when, when is this?
24th.
24th? All right, well, okay, 24th.
End of January.
Sorry. End of Januaries.
You're scaring Lydia.
So, you know, and if I'm wrong and they figure that out, then, well, that's $70,000 less that we have to appropriate, but we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. So are there any other questions from the finance committee about what makes up the deficit, the 305? Because then we can start talking about our, with the board, our plans for appropriating the 305. Is that a reasonable thing to talk about, Brian?
Yeah, Darrell, I, I think so.
Yes.
Can we talk about the health insurance on this list for a minute?
Sure.
What is that? That it's a deficit, I know, but the way the health insurance, and Derek, you and I have talked about this many times, the way the health insurance goes, we pay ahead, it's a prepaid, so in the month of June... So in the month of June, we're paying for July premium. And that money has to be moved from June to the next fiscal year because you're you're booking it in the right fiscal year. As far as I know, that hasn't been done, but it's been put on the list here as a deficit. Now, are we're asking for money to cover that? Are we going to pay thirteen months' worth of health insurance premium in the year two thousand seventeen then? Is what this is all about? This shouldn't be on the list.
This is about that recon that you were ended up working on. That whole.
Right.
Double, that's what this is. I haven't had the opportunity to get back to that, to go over your work. I mean, I can verify the enterprise funds because those pieces stick right out.
Yeah.
But all the general fund, I need to go through that, the way you spent months going through that. I need to understand your process so that I can verify that, yep, this is going to take care of the deficit.
So why are we listing it on here? Because because you haven't done.
Cause it's on the ledger.
Cause it's on the ledger, it's part of the recon, it's probably part of the eight hundred thousand dollars of.
Unapplied.
Unapplied revenue.
No.
No, that's different.
Separate, separate, yeah.
So this is an expense that has not been proved out by you yet.
Correct, this all started back probably last April. So we were working on.
February, it's actually February, yes.
Okay, so that's when it started, we knew we had to circle back to to get to this. With the upset, um, with losing employee in Marlene's office, then, you know, we went through down that road. And then we came back in, took this project over, reconciled that piece. But I haven't done my side to take a look at that.
Okay, so in theory, if I'm correct, once this is reconciled, we will have an additional thirty eight thousand dollars of free cash. Cause we're not.
Free cash in two thousand eighteen, is what you're saying.
It would fall to free cash in two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, cause it is truly a deficit.
Huh?
That's correct, because it is not.
It's not truly a deficit, because you're right, that we're not going to pay thirteen months.
Sixteen months in a year.
Yeah, in a year.
You know, the numbers, yeah.
Right. Okay.
To be there.
The caution.
Yes, Stanley.
So, um, to 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 your point on the thirteen months, so just from my own understanding.
Excuse me.
That money should have gone into a contra account, some type of closeout account, so the books could have been closed and then reintroduced back in July. So that you had a closing and then you had an opening again?
The bill has to be paid prior to the first of the month. So the bill, yeah, the check is issued in the month of June for the July premium. It's really a prepaid, yes. But he is stating that he needs to verify the work that we did on it before he can post that. Normally you'd be crediting two thousand and seventeen and charging two thousand and eighteen and booking it where it actually goes, should be booked.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, so any other questions about the three hundred and five? Uh, do we want it, um, so two options. I I did want to touch a little bit on our way forward and where we were with the eight hundred thousand of unapplied revenue. Or do we want to talk about how are we going to account for the three hundred and five thousand dollars on town floor?
Yeah, let's do that first.
Okay, so again, correct me if I'm wrong. The first thing we would try and do is ask the townspeople to take two hundred thousand dollars out of our stabilization funds.
Two hundred thousand of the stabilization?
Which doesn't get us quite to zero, but gets us pretty darn close, right Derek?
Correct.
What would that leave stabilizations at?
The accounts?
Well, um, a hundred thousand, when we met today, Marlene, we said a hundred thousand from the town hall.
Town hall stabilization, a hundred from the others.
Probably be a little, oh, you know, be just slightly over a hundred thousand, um, from the stabilization.
The regular stabilization fund.
Regular stabilization.
So I don't think it it zeros us out, but it gets us gets us down now.
What would it be left?
Town hall has about two hundred thousand in it and the regular is about three hundred, I believe.
Really, they're that high?
They're around two hundred apiece.
They're around two hundred apiece. So so that's, there's the question, because I had thought we could only do, we were only going to do two hundred thousand out of total, total out of stabilization. And then we were going to go back, this is a suggestion, we were going to go back to departments and say we're going to have to take the hundred and five thousand equally among all departments, school on down. But if we have more money in stabilization to take at this point.
We have the numbers right here. So town hall stabilization fund has a hundred and ninety-nine thousand one fourteen. And, let's see, stabilization has two hundred and eight thousand one hundred and forty-one.
Okay.
Were you thinking about fifty percent of our stabilization?
Well, that's all we thought we had.
Right, are we, so 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 before I, we, the discussion goes any further, are we, uh, pretty comfortable with those numbers?
Yeah.
That was as of December twenty seventh.
Sorry. Huh? This is general everybody, you know, like I want to make sure the accountants and Laura Lee, Marlene, everyone's, you know, because. Huh?
On the same page.
We're all on the same page, because then maybe our strategy changes a little. Maybe we we try to ask the townspeople to make up the three hundred and five thousand by taking that all from stabilization. Then we don't have to go back to departments at mid-year, which is going to be brutally painful for small departments, big departments, everybody.
And with the idea that the money that is found, that's actually goes back in a stabilization, right?
Right, and 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 I say that with a crooked mouth, because it was two years ago that we had, we took a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars out of stabilization and we have yet to put that back yet. So, you know, I want townspeople to be, you know, I I'm certainly committed to taking all that money and putting it back. But, you know, in theory, if we had five hundred thousand dollars in free cash and I'm just.
Making up a number.
Making up a number, that would mean that ninety percent of that is going back to, is 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 going back to stabilization.
Well, do we have an idea of what free cash might be? Cause they're they're holding back a certain amount already that they haven't given us and then we have, um.
I think a conservative estimate of five hundred thousand is, I don't know. I I, you know.
Yeah, between four hundred and five hundred.
At this point, I would, I err on the side of conservative caution, because I don't know. A lot of things.
So we know how much was withheld from fiscal, whatever sixteen, I guess it was.
Yeah, yeah.
And so and we can kind of estimate more or less what free cash would have been in fiscal seventeen or would be in fiscal seventeen.
Right.
So it's a sum of those two, correct?
Yep, and hopefully, and the real kicker here, and that leads to the next discussion, is are we on track to close fiscal year seventeen by the end of this month? That to me is the the real the real question here.
That question goes over here, right?
Huh?
Yeah.
That goes.
You have to do both, you have to you have to resolve the deficit and you also have to close seventeen.
Well, no.
As the D O R is concerned.
Well, right, we 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 have to make up the deficit, we have to have town meetings so we can do the the tax bill. But if if, you know, we certainly need to, yes, we have to do all those things. So so my question then goes to Derek, um, Laura, Laura Lee, Justin. Are we on track? Is that a reasonable assumption that we're gonna, we're gonna be done and if it's not?
Four weeks.
Yeah, four weeks is pretty quick.
Um, July is more or less done. Laura's just got to kick a memo back to me and and we squared July away. Forwarded it, uh, along August information, let her know what I was looking for on that. And, uh, I've got to pick a task, either unapplied, deficits, trying to fit it all in.
It's kind of got to all be done.
Seventeen's got to be done, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, in in my.
Two months off schedule?
Huh?
Are we two months off of the schedule we had agreed upon or?
Oh, yeah.
You know, wow.
Not more.
Yeah, if not more. And and so, I mean, and please, I'm not trying to throw anybody under, but at this point, I would like, you know, I think we as a committee want to know, is this realistic? And if it's not realistic, what can we do to get this thing done? Stanley?
And I'd like to build on that, I I think you touched upon two, two issues. One, are we going to be able to close out seventeen? How do we find the three hundred and five thousand? And I think the third leg to the stool is, um, are we on track for the next fiscal year?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't even bring up eighteen, but yeah, that's.
But you have to, because six months ago, we said and came up with a very definitive plan and missed every marker. And and now we're here where we said we wouldn't be.
Right.
We need to think about the next fiscal year as well.
I I I I do agree, and I'm just trying to be a little bit focused on getting seventeen seventeen finished. And, you know, if we can get that wrapped up, because then maybe we can.
And I, I just don't know, you know, what more can we do? I mean, we've been, you know, for the last year, throwing money at this problem, you know, uh, we beefed, even before that, beefed up the overall department. Sure, and we're making no progress. I mean, I'd be interested in hearing from Justin, really. You know, how are we where we are today with the steps that, considering the steps that we've taken over the last twelve months? And do you have any thoughts in regards to how we should handle getting up to date for this current fiscal year?
So, I would say, um, you know, maybe if we look back a little bit, last couple of years. So I think when this project first started, um, there's a lot of things in the management letter, the two thousand sixteen management letter that have been problematic for a number of time, a number of years. So for example, a lot of the things that we're talking about tonight, uh, these fund balance deficits, these capital projects, they've been reported in your management letter for years now. So this is not a a new issue or or should not be a new issue to the, you know, the folks around the table who have been, who have some institutional knowledge. Same thing on the the calculation of free cash, you've been deducted free cash for years now for these issues. So this is not something that's happening this year. This is something that, uh, has been plaguing the town for for a number of years. So I would say if we go back to, you know, say the June and July timeframe, we're having discussion of the items that we are trying to take a look at and resolve. This isn't an item that any of us talked about. So, you know, we had a number of calls, you know, with the, you know, finance committee, the, uh, the select board, the town administrator, town accountant, the town treasurer. You know, this is, this is never a topic that came up. So for, uh, an issue that has plagued the town for, uh, and some, for some of these deficits, four, five, six, one of them's ten years old at this point. You know, this is not an issue that was, uh, brought up by anybody in town. And so it's a significant factor, um, that was not part of the original game plan. So, um, I think taking a look at that is also, you know, a bit of a discovery process, you know, as you go through this in terms of, um, items that either, you know, are not projected to be a problem, that later become a problem or items that are just discovered as you work your way through the process that, you know, are not part of the overall game plan. That has the potential to sometimes make the project go a little bit more smoothly, but more often, uh, take a little bit of extra time. We have, uh, reached out to the town's auditor, Rosellian Clark, um, to see if they can provide us with, uh, work papers from the last few audits that may, uh, yield some useful information, you know, in resolving some of these things. You know, we've been in communication with the Department of Revenue, you know, almost on a weekly basis, you know, for the last sixty days or so. So, I mean, they're well aware, we've reviewed the, you know, the free cash and the tax rate calculations for almost the last ten years to see, you know, how many of these issues have been, you know, acknowledged and recorded by the town. And again, you know, a lot of these things have been kicking around for some time, you know. And so I think, and looking at, you know, what is the scope of the remediation today versus the scope of the remediation maybe six months ago? Is that, I mean, you have, you have some far deeper issues that are just getting cash reconciled, right? I mean, a lot of this started with, you know, what can we do to get cash reconciled? What can we do to, you know, assist the accountant and the treasurer to get their offices up to date and get transactions looked at? When in fact, the conversation should have gone a little something more like, you know, what are the deeply integrated issues in your management letter for the last ten years that, you know, have larger scale financial impacts on the town, you know, than reconciling cash? So I think, you know, looking at, um, you know, the issue of, you know, we have this three hundred and five thousand, you know, we've identified that some of these things, you know, are potentially ledger errors. Well, you know, when you look at these projects that go back six or seven years, you can't just fix them, right? I mean, you have audited financial statements that have been released to, you know, the Department of Revenue, to to rating agencies, you know, you have these public statements that, you know, the 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 Board of the Selectmen have accepted as, you know, being, you know, true and accurate and that people have made financial decisions on. There's going to be a bit of a process required, you know, if we determine that, you know, a capital project from six years ago needs to be financially restated. I mean, that's something that we're going to have to coordinate with the auditors. I mean, that's not a quick and easy fix. I mean, identifying it, you know, hopefully these items can be identified. Whatever the original cause of the issue is, it's been recorded incorrectly this entire time and there's a bit of a process, you know, because you're not talking about just restating the fund that's in deficit. I mean, the money's got to come from someplace, right? So there's something else that needs to be restated as well here. And that's where you potentially open Pandora's boxes, you know, if I move money from A to B, well, then what happens to A? You know, now do we have a problem with A that we're not even talking about right now, right? So there's a a fair amount of work that needs to be, um, done on a number of issues. You know, when we get to the, um, issue of, well, you know, do we think that we can get F Y seventeen closed by the end of January? I mean, I'd say it's unlikely, but I mean, I think one of the things that I'd like to put out there is, you know, is there something else that needs to be reviewed here other than, you know, how fast can we get free cash back? You know, so for example, I mean, we should really be looking at, okay, for F Y seventeen, how many of these issues can be rectified in F Y seventeen? Right, F Y seventeen is not a closed financial period. You know, are there any of these issues that can be researched that we can definitively determine where corrections or adjustments can be made? That that doesn't continue to extend the problem, right? Cause if you, if there are things that can be corrected in F Y seventeen, but we choose to race to the finish line and close F Y seventeen and leave them in there, now we're talking about another financial period that needs to be restated potentially down the line when it gets corrected, you know. So part of the, you know, discussion for, um, you know, the two groups here tonight is, um, i- is the goal to just get free cash back as quickly as possible? Or is the goal to take a step back and, you know, identify some more of these things to see what we can get worked on? Uh, I believe we still need, do need to have the auditors come in sooner rather than later. But I think that discussion should focus more on, you know, again, fixing these items that are 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 prompting this conversation tonight about things that have to happen with the tax rate, you know, versus when can we get F Y seventeen closed?
Thank you. Isn't, isn't, excuse me.
Hold on, Mike. Stan Stanley had a question first.
Well, it it's kind of a question and kind of a comment. To build on what what Sean just said, it it, uh, it makes no sense to me in regards to, two years ago, we were in this situation and ended up in front of the town and took, went to our place where we have a lot of money and asked the townspeople to take it and balance the budget. And we did that two years ago. To me, that seems like now the playing field is level again. And then we come into another year. And then we come into another year and we had to go to the town again, two years, or last year, and ask for another whole bucket of money to level it out so that the state could certify our budget, which means we're in a good position again. And we go through it and now we're in the same place where we're going to ask the town for more money or transfer funds or put it in different buckets and balance out the budget, which means to me now the playing field is level again. And we move forward. I don't understand how we have to go back ten years and reclassify and redo things that have already been put to bed with our ability to be able to balance the budget. It makes no sense to me. Um, but I think that as you, the town select board move forward and we get this proverbial mess cleaned up and the finance committee have to do either what's called a hot wash, a deeper dive, an analysis of, of what's going on and maybe there needs to be some serious systemic changes in regards to how this town does business. Because I don't think we can keep going year after year after year and asking people in this town who are sitting out there going, what the heck? We're, we're at the same place again and we're practicing our mistakes. We're, i- it, it just needs, it lends itself to the bigger question on how we, how we even do business around here.
So, so Justin, did, did, is some of this as a result of we've started to do a better job reconciling? And as we've reconciled, we've unearthed some of these issues?
So, I, I would say, I would say to some degree, you know, that, that is, that is a, a part of it.
Right.
Say it's a huge part of it. I mean, again, um, some of these issues have been outlined very quite publicly.
Back to the other audits.
Right, so, so a lot of, some of these things are not, are not new issues. Um, you know, the, when we, when we had the conversation with the Department of Revenue and the, and the conference call with them, I mean, they, they noted that on the work papers that had been submitted by, you know, the last several town accountants, for example, that, you know, they were able to quickly and accurately trace these items back, the items that we were, um, requesting on the recap, trace them back to fund balance deficits that have gone back, you know, again, years, right? So, so, so these items are not newly discovered, for example, right?
Right.
You know, a lot of these things are, you know, they're out there. Um, I would think Derek has done a great job of, um, actually finding some of the background information to rectify these things. You know, so for se- several of these fund balance deficits well predate him, you know. However, in the course of, uh, you know, several weeks, he's been able to identify, you know, where the issue stemmed from. You know, and hopefully for some of these items, you know, we can come up with a fairly quick and accurate game plan to get them resolved, you know. And so I think that's where we're at is that there's just a fair amount of work that has to happen on these things. You know, for, um, the items that, that go back a number of years. Uh, you know, it's really going to come back to the institutional knowledge of the folks that have been around, um, that can fill in some of the gaps and, um, you know, and help to identify, um, what the original intent of some of these capital projects were, you know, why they're showing in deficit, where the funding should have come from, um, you know, those sorts of items. So, while s- some of this is, 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 um, just older items that have just not been resolved. Um, you know, it's, it's common to find some of these items that go back this long that you don't feel the effect of it. You're, 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 um, you're docked free cash every single year on them, right? So, since the very first capital project went into deficit, your free cash has been lower every single year by that amount of money. You know, once they've been out there for a period of time, you don't notice the effect on free cash anymore because your free cash is always artificially lowered by them.
Right.
Right? So, again, looking toward, you know, today and to the future, what the game plan should be is that, you know, yes, I would generally agree that, um, you know, that if these issues can get resolved, the town will be due a fair amount of free cash, you know, with the footnote of, I would take caution in that the, the Department of Revenue and your auditors are both going to ask for, uh, some fairly serious substantiation on the figures before they give you that money, right? So, um, you know, quick fixes are, are not necessarily the solution, right? I mean, we need to be able to document that, you know, the town did the work, you know, there's confidence in the numbers and that, you know, to kind of everybody's point here that, you know, that's, it's been resolved, you know, and that this is not gonna be recurring issue in the future.
So, is the goal then to get as close as we can to close seventeen? To try and fix at least some of these issues? I'm assuming we cannot fix them all in the next three months before the next town meeting. I mean, maybe, i- is that a, is that accurate?
So, I would say of some of the issues that have been identified, you know, there are a portion of them that could be resolved. Um, you know, no, certainly not all of them will be resolved. I mean, some of these are years in the making, so.
Right. So, should we then change our goals? So, we talked about trying to be done at the, at the end of January. Do we try, do we say, okay, let's give it till the end of February, then bring the auditors in? Or is that not, not the right step to take?
So, I mean, I, I think what I would recommend to the town is that, um, you engage your auditors into a conversation now. Um, not, not engage them to necessarily start the work, but I mean, I feel like the next step should, the one should be to engage the auditors. Have a conversation about these aged items that we're talking about here. Some of these deficits that go back several years and open a conversation with them now in terms of, you know, this is what our game plan is and try to engage them in coming up with a consolidated game plan. You know, at the end of the day, it's going to be the blessing of your auditors that will move this forward with the Department of Revenue. And so, I mean, I think it's, um, necessary to, you know, have a conversation with, you know, the auditors, the Department of Revenue and, you know, the town management to, uh, as a group, come together with what that game plan should be.
Okay.
I mean, as I said, uh, there are a number of these issues that can be resolved, um, you know, in appropriate amount of time that will, um, you know, but for some of these larger items, I mean, again, especially where we're looking at, you know, potentially restating, you know, closed financial periods, um, that's where you want the auditors to be engaged as part of the ongoing conversation. So.
Right.
You know, I think that that decision is, you know, larger than, you know, necessarily us around the room today.
Right.
And that, you know, that should be a phone call that, you know, happens this week, um, to, to see if we can, you know, get them engaged.
Brian?
So, I, I just wanted to pick up on that, Justin. So, uh, before you arrived, I, I had made the comment that, you know, the deficit's three hundred and five thousand dollars, but some of it's been identified as to why, but that we should move forward with that whole amount at this point, which is, I think, what you just said, because some of it goes back a ways and we don't wanna just, uh, all of a sudden, raise red flags, if you will, to the Department of Revenue. We, we wanna clear the balance and then chip away at figuring out exactly where, where that, uh, why it shows a deficit. Is that, is that correct? Is that, because people are probably saying, well, if you know that there's twenty thousand here, why don't you just lower it from three oh five to two eighty five? But the idea is, this is what they, they've identified and this is what we're gonna take off the, take off the books. Is that?
Right. I mean, if, you know, if there are low hanging fruit items that, you know, where the town was able to demonstrate that, you know, here's the cause of the error, here's the solution of the error, here's the restated figure for, for FY seventeen items, right? I mean, we're really just talking about the last fiscal year.
Right.
Um, you know, if there, if there are potentially those items, um, you know, that those could get reviewed by the Department of Revenue and the town could receive a blessing, I mean, potentially, um, you know, there may be a, uh, ability to, to reduce it, uh, slightly. Um, you know, I, but time is of the essence in terms of getting the tax rate set.
Yes.
And, you know, again, the conversation is, you know, looking at the town from a cash flow perspective and getting the bills issued and, you know, a survivability standpoint of operations for the remainder of this year.
I, I just have one question. Um, I, I wanna thank you for coming to Hatfield and helping coach us and, and get us on the right track. I appreciate that. But I, I, I know that one of the biggest concerns is reconciling, making reconciliation. And if we're closing the books now in January or February, does that mean we're already now six months behind on eighteen? I mean, that's, that's my concern. Are we, are we, are we reconciling on like a monthly basis to, to stay on track? Or are we closing seventeen already January, February? But that means we're already, you know, six months behind on doing reconciliation on eighteen?
So, um, it's, it's been a balancing act right now. So, I mean, I would say that Derek and Laurel Lee have, have started reconciling FY eighteen. So, you know, in, in prior years, I would say that, you know, at this point, there probably likely be no reconciliations completed. Um, you know, at this point, i- is there a month that is fully one hundred percent reconciled? The answer's no. Um, but FY eighteen reconciliations have begun. And again, it is a balancing act of time and resources between the departments, um, to mitigate the FY seventeen issues, but make sure that FY eighteen isn't being left completely behind.
Stanley?
Wow. Because when you say that, because that was the essence of my initial question, you know, that's the third leg of the stool. So, does that mean that all the department heads are flying their airplanes upside down in the dark? Because they have no idea where they are in their spending within the budgets. I mean, um, snow and ice and snow and ice wages and things like that, um, doesn't anybody have an idea of where they sit? I mean, drill it down, drill it down right to the local level and, and, um, i- it, people are just spending?
Stan, you get an expense report twice a month. Yeah, I would, I would, I think everybody knows what money they have and what money they have to spend. These are, these are fund balances which go back. These are, you know, we've got a li- list of them here. But I, I'm, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty comfortable that the fire department knows how much money they have to spend and are doing a good job spending it. Same with DPW school. So, I don't see that to be as, be an issue.
So, nobody's allowed to, knowing what they know, and if they're within their swim lanes, uh, they're, they're not allowed to deficit spend?
Oh, no, nobody can def- nobody's ever been able to. The only, the only thing we can deficit spend is no- snow and ice.
Yeah, I get that.
And, and elections.
And elections, yeah, that's right. We get these special elections. Yeah, go ahead, Lydia.
Somebody had explained to me and, and I, I'm not sure I understand, and Justin, if you can hear me and say yes, yes or no, that the three hundred and five thousand, other than maybe the snow and ice, which is a true deficit, that some of those items are not really deficits, but the DOR wants us to treat them as a deficit because they affect closed out years? Is, am I saying that correctly?
So, ye- yes and no, right? So, so, snow and ice is your true appropriation deficit for you, right? So, the hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and some change.
Right.
I think the answer on the other, the fund balance deficits for, um, the capital projects and some of those other items, the answer is, um, maybe they are and maybe they're not. And so, I mean, there's not a definitive yes or no. I mean, Derek has done a lot of work to identify that some of them, in fact, um, are, may not be. Um, a- a- as for the other items though, I mean, I, I don't know that we've definitively identified every single thing on that list. You know, what caused the problem, you know, what wa- what should have happened with it, you know, and what a potential corrective action might be. Um, so I think the answer is for the entire three oh five is that some of it is known, um, but there's probably still more unknown than known, given how far back some of these items go. You know, I mean, if, if it were a, a function of, you know, we're looking at, you know, FY seventeen and FY sixteen for some of these items, I think that's a very different conversation. But again, given some of their age, um, and how far back they go, uh, ad- additional work would need to be done to identify the cause and things like that.
Okay. Um, do you, do you have this sheet, this, uh, fund balance deficit sheet? Justin, or you put, you, well, you wrote it, so you must have it. What is the P, what's the PY deficit? Is that a fiscal year deficit?
Prior year.
Prior year versus possible def- can you just explain that to us a little?
The PY, the PY deficits are items that have been identified by the Department of Revenue or your auditors as being a deficit previously. So, we'll call this like maybe the, the carry forward items.
Okay.
That have been out there for, um, you know, FY sixteen and beyond. Um, the possible deficit items are items that, um, are shown on the ledger to be in deficit. However, you know, given the earlier discussion about, you know, the unapplied revenue and some of the ongoing work with the FY seventeen budget, that is, it's not, I'm not able to say at this time, um, what the status of those items are. Um, so additional work is being done on those things, you know, in discussing, you know, with the Department of Revenue. They're more concerned with the things that, again, that have been carried on the tax rate and the free cash for, in, in the audits for years now. You know, so that, that's the jumping off line. So, I mean, I guess the, you know, asterisk footnote on, you know, the, the, the middle column there is, is that, you know, there's additional work happening on those items, um, and there would most likely be a, you know, a future update on those. You know, but you, I mean, not, not to be, you know, the negative Nelly here, right? But, you know, it should be kept in the back of your mind that, you know, as that research is ongoing, that, you know, some of these items may be part of a future.
So, so Brian, select board, so our way forward on this? I'm assuming you, you guys and Marlene, you're, you'll contact the auditors and we'll start that process?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
And maybe we should not be putting out timelines right now.
Well, I.
Cause, cause they haven't worked yet, have they, Stanley?
And mine would say the fiscal year eighteen first quarter was gonna be reconciled, uh, October twenty second, you know, quite a ways from that.
So, right, and, and I think to Justin's point, I think we could do a quick and dirty and close the year versus let's try and do it correctly and let's get as many of these figured out before we close the year? And is, is that fair, Justin?
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I would say, you know, you have to balance your goals here. Um, it's, it is, it is, it is, you know, unfortunate that we're having this conversation in January, you know, versus, versus say October, right? But, um, I mean, I think it's, you know, again, to, to many of your points is that, you know, it, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, we need to get these things resolved and we wanna make sure that this doesn't happen again. And, um, you know, whereas again, we're talking about items that, the oldest one that we could identify is ten plus years old here, right? So, um, you know, to take the additional time to say, you know, you're going to make a good faith effort and try to work through these things, you know. And, and when we start, you know, with the easy stuff and the older stuff, you know, we, we start to work our way through them. Um, but, I mean, I, I think it would be prudent again, and this is why I think it's important to have the conversation with the Department of Revenue and with the, the town's auditors. I mean, I think it's prudent that, you know, these things have been identified for a number of years. They, they, they really need to be resolved and, um, you know, the town will be better off in the long run for it, you know. So, again, I, you know, again, these items are plaguing you from a free cash standpoint every single year. I mean, um, it's, t- t- there's a financial benefit to the town in the long run to get these things resolved and get them off your back.
Right. So, the tax rates and the balance, how do we approach that? That's, seems to be the most important factor.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we have to figure out how we're gonna fund the three hundred and five thousand dollars.
And then if we find those items that goes back to free cash, cause I find it hard to believe that i- if I owed somebody thirty thousand ten, ten years ago, they'd be knocking on my door, so.
Municipal telling.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, and I am not gonna be quick to say that, yes, we'll, that, that we'll get all that free cash back for this year's town meeting because, uh, I don't know. I, I don't, I, I made that mistake once before. I'm not ready to make that mistake again, you know?
Well, you know, it, it's been a painful few years.
Yeah.
To, to say the least. Some, some of us have been doing this for.
Way too long.
Some of us have been doing it way too long.
That's an attempt to clean it up, though.
Well, I, and you're right, and, and every year it has been an attempt to clean it up. I, and I, I think, um, I, I mean, I have a good feeling, uh, especially with Justin's explanation uh, and background, that, and I, and I totally understand it. If, if we've just gotta take a little bit longer, but to get it right and be done with it once and for all. I mean, if something's been hanging around, one of these is from two thousand and six.
Well, and I don't need to get it right, but to keep it right after we get it right.
That's my point. So, so, so why rush it through? I mean, obviously, we want the tax rate set so we can keep revenue flowing into the coffers. I mean, that, that should be our number one goal. I mean, that, that should be our number one goal. I'm with Darryl as far as free cash. We all want it, and it's great, and we need, we owe ourselves in certain line items to pay ourselves back. But if we're truly, if we're truly going to make the effort, which we've been doing now, over, especially over the last year with, with the additional resources, I mean, we just got to bring it, we got to bring it to closure, and we've got to be done with it, because, I said this to Stan, I guess I owe you the dinner now, you know, I thought by January 1st, you know, we were moving, and then we got hit with this two weeks ago, three weeks ago, this $305,000 deficit. Darryl and I were like, you gotta be kidding.
Yeah, where did that come from?
You know, so, but we got to take care of it. I mean, we've got to do what we got to do. This is a business, we got to fix it, and we've got to fix the, the issue, and we've got to fix the systemic issue that caused it and be able to move forward, so.
That's my concern with using stabilization. There is no indication to me, and it's not even within any of our power, that the systemic issues are going to be addressed. It seems improbable. I mean, we've proposed, both as a finance committee, I think, most electioneering years, systemic changes that have been shown to work across the state, whether it's combining the collector treasurer position, you know, variety of different, having a town manager versus a town administrator. And these changes go nowhere, every year, vote after vote. And so, if nothing, if nothing systemic is going to change, then taking our emergency money, you know, doesn't seem like the best solution, you know? Because, I mean, at the end of the day, if an emergency does happen, you know, we're hardly the people to be asking for people to, you know, give us credit, you know, at this point. And so, I, and I know it's different in municipal, in the municipal world, they probably still would give us the money, but I think, you know, taking it from emergency money without a solid plan, or at least some sort of plan, just doesn't make sense at some point, you know?
The problem is, is we don't take it from there, we're ending up taking it from budgets.
Yeah. And we're going to have to take some from there, but 50% seems steep after, you know, we just took out almost an equivalent amount two years, well, over the last two years have taken out the same, a similar amount.
Oh, from stabilization.
Stabilization, yeah, that's where it's coming from.
But, you know, in, in, I don't know, Marlene, do you remember, we, you and I, we had a discussion, if we took $200,000 out of, out of stabilization and took the other 105 out of people's budget, and it couldn't come out of wages, it would have to only, go, go ahead.
You don't want to go after, you know, take it from wages, it would come out of your expense. So, you know, I did an exercise, I was asked to do an exercise at 1.5%, that would generate $104,513 from the budget.
I'm sorry, did you repeat that?
Hundred and fourth by 1.5%.
Just your, all your budgets, not your wage line.
Not excluding the enterprise funds. So, it's 100, the current budget.
Current.
Fiscal year 18 budget, it would be.
You're already six months through the year, so you've got to cut 3%.
You're six months in, you're going to take a big hit with the school.
Correct, yes.
I mean, except for the school. Other than that, you know, I think for most departments, I mean, 3% in a situation that we're in, it's not terrible.
I just wanted to ask you, Marlene, weren't there some budgets that couldn't take, take that hit?
The enterprise funds, we would not hit the enterprise funds.
So, I just want to mention that, so that, that 105,000 would be less. You know, you had your, your budget, you know, one line item in your budget, and, you know, so there would be reductions to that, some reductions.
And I don't think the schools could take that either, so that would probably drastically reduce it.
Stanley. You've got, you've got some contract stuff out there that you wouldn't be able to.
Right, right. Not everything can take it.
So, the hurt would be more, because you cannot not pay teachers, you would have to.
Oh, of course not, yeah.
You would have to lay teachers' load, or you would not have to buy the paper and pencils, which would be even a deeper cut.
And some budgets are at zero.
So.
Let's take, if we could, though, let's, we can talk about how we're going to do it, but.
I was hoping to, to clear up something at the same time here, because the purpose of setting the tax rate, which is important, is so that we can pull in revenue and keep the town going. With the recent passage of the new tax laws, created a flurry of people who wanted to come in and prepay their taxes. And so, I think there's a misconception out there, because the DOR was flawed with, probably not from only the town of Hatfield, but from many communities, on how people can prepay their taxes if they haven't received a tax bill. And I had sent an email to Laura Lee, and I think I forwarded it off to the board, that the assessors can't issue a warrant if our valuations are in place or we don't have a tax rate. And the DOR had forwarded over to us, because the new tax legislation was passed so late in the year, we received this at 416 on December 28th. So, even if we could react to it, there was no way we could host a proper meeting to even have the authors, to hold a meeting, to authorize the treasurer. But I pulled up the law, and I pulled up the form, and we've done some consultation work with, with our folks, and the, the avenue that the DLS or the Department of Revenue had given communities was to go under the general law, Chapter 60, Section 19, which authorizes the assessors to authorize the collector to pull in additional revenue if the town has not sent out their bills. And I pulled up the law, and here's the law, it's very short. If the assessors are of the opinion that the credit of a person taxed is doubtful or that he is about to leave the Commonwealth, they may, by a special warrant, direct the collector forthwith without demand or notice to compel payment by distress or imprisonment, whether the tax is payable immediately or at a future day by installments or otherwise. Or if a person desires to make an early payment or payments of taxes prior to the commitment by the assessors of the tax list and warrant required by Section 53 of Chapter 59, the assessors may, by a special warrant, authorize the collector to accept such payment. And I know with the changes in the law, folks were coming in hoping that they could get their taxes paid within this year. In order for the assessors to be able to even issue this, we would have to have a tax rate. And so, the misconception is, is we could have, by special warrant, authorized the town to collect taxes, which is untrue. This is a case-by-case scenario. If one of you were leaving the community and we had a tax rate, yet we didn't have the bills out, we could authorize the collector to pull in the money based on our tax rate and an evaluation, even though you don't have your bill. But if we don't have a tax rate, we can't authorize what to collect. So, I just want to have that made clear to the board and to the finance committee and to the community who's listening, that it's not a matter of negligence by the assessors. Part of it is not getting the information in time, one, new tax legislation, two, and three, not having a tax rate which we could base a special warrant against. So, I just want to clear that up in regards to pulling money into the town.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, yeah, question, is, is the closing of fiscal 17 a prerequisite to setting a tax rate?
No.
No? It's not. Okay. So, the only prerequisite at this point is covering deficit.
Cover the $305,000 at town meeting. And DOR will allow us to set a tax rate.
What, what that does, Mike, is, is by, by having that balanced budget, the proper forms are going to be able to be filled out, which then enables us to push the button to the DOR to.
Right.
Our, our tax values were certified, I believe, September 28th of this year, so the assessors stand ready based on having the rest of it completed. Lydia.
Before we forget, are we at a point where the selectmen can take a vote to set the special town meeting in January 24th?
Yeah, I thought we had done that, actually. Earlier.
Oh, we didn't.
Yeah. Talked about it.
Then there's no rush. I thought, I thought we'd be close, 17 to get.
Yeah. I thought we had done it, to be honest. I thought that was the one thing we were going to do, and then we're going to weigh down what was actually part of the article.
I didn't hear, I haven't heard.
But you need the date.
I haven't heard a vote yet.
No, you haven't.
And I can't do anything until there's a vote.
Make a motion, a special town meeting is January 24th at 7:00 PM at Smith Academy.
Cafeteria, did you say?
In the cafeteria, Smith Academy.
Academy cafeteria.
That's a motion, Brian.
Oh, I made a motion, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's a motion, right?
Second.
Sounded like a motion to me.
So, that's a good sign. All right. Is there any further discussion on that?
No.
Okay, sorry, Lydia, I thought we took care of that two hours ago.
Laura Lee, you got a question?
Well, I was just going to expand on, on what Stan had said, because I did receive 14 payments from taxpayers making estimated payments against the third quarter, and once I received that bulletin at 416 on the 28th, I returned, I did contact DOR and spoke with our representative, and I was advised to return the four payments to the taxpayers that made it. So, I, you know, I did draft up a letter that I had shared with these, with the assessors, and I did return those 14 payments. And any additional payments that come in, which has only been, I think, maybe one or two, anything, you know, at this point, I think we're through with the influx, because, you know, that was until December 29th. But just so that the taxpayers know that, you know, the collector's office cannot accept early estimated payments until, you know, we do have a tax rate set and we have a commitment from the assessors. So, that's the reason that those were returned.
Okay, thank you.
I just need, I need one more thing. So, we had our motion, and it was seconded twice, but we never took the official vote.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's all right. All those in favor? Aye. All right, there we go.
Was that what you wanted, Lydia?
Can you do that even though it's not a selectmen's meeting now?
Sure.
I just have one, one last comment. I think it's great that we're, we're going to try to cover this deficit and get our tax rate set, and move along with what we need to do in order to generate some revenue for the community as quickly as possible. The thing I hope we don't do, and what I haven't seen tonight, and I think we should discuss it, is, is have a plan. We just can't let 17 kind of, kind of wallow at this point. I mean, I think people are kind of saying, oh, well, okay, all we got to do is have a special town meeting and, and cover our deficit, and we'll have a tax rate, and we'll go out and we'll generate some money, and then we're right, you know, the annual town meeting comes along and what have you. I, I think there still needs to be, and maybe Justin can help out, I think there has to be a more specific plan with some dates for accomplishing certain activities, who's responsible for what, by when, so that we can close fiscal 17 and move on to 18. And, you know, Stan had mentioned earlier, a couple of months ago, we had a plan in place, and, and he was going through, I think, in some meeting, the activities that were supposed to be accomplished by when. I think even Sean has just mentioned, he's got things in his book saying, you know, we missed deadlines by two months. Well, if we don't establish a plan tonight, or if, or if someone doesn't develop another one of these plans, my fear as a taxpayer is that fiscal 17 just ain't ever going to get closed. And the other concern I have is that, is that, and just as importantly, I think there needs to be a plan to dig into this deficit so that we can recover monies that we're going to be taking out of stabilization to cover this deficit and replenish that stabilization fund. My fear is, as a taxpayer, is that we're just going to take $300,000 out of stabilization and whatever budgets, and we're going to cover that deficit, and we're just going to move along as a town. And I don't think that's fair to the community. I think we owe it to our taxpayers to dig into this, the reasons for this deficit, to resolve them such that we can make accounting entries at some point that will, in fact, replenish our free cash.
Well, I, I don't disagree with anything you said. I totally agree with you. Some things that we are, been looking at, we do have, this is the financial policy manual that we're in the process of reviewing, that we had a grant that Marlene got on financial procedures, so that's part of the plan. The other plan is consulting with Bay State and trying to help formulate a plan, so it's not like it's not been forgotten, and, and we are, I think we are following up on those items, so that's, that's part. And I know with the finance committee, we've all received this, and we're all, we haven't gotten a chance to review it yet, because we got all this other stuff we want to get through. We're on, we got the football on the 20-yard line, we're not making a touchdown.
If we ignore or postpone the, the accounting entries that are required to offset that deficit that we now know of, to another financial period, what is it that it would take for us to close 17? What are the specific activities that have to be done by Laura Lee, that have to be done by our town accountant, that have to be done by our consultant, such that by a certain date, we will have 17 closed? Because until we do that, you know? Well, we certainly came into tonight's meeting with thinking that we were going to get, the goal certainly was to close 17 by the end of January. We had talked about it, that's, that's where we were headed for. The only thing that changed tonight was Justin's comments about the fund deficits and making sure we didn't rush to close the year without figuring out what some of these deficits are and getting that, so.
But we can do that after we close the year.
No, we can't. No, we cannot. It has to be done before we close the year. Otherwise, it goes into 18, and so, so.
Is that true, Justin? We can't, we can't just kick this can down the road for another fiscal year and close 17 with a, with a goal of resolving all these issues in 18?
So, there's some of them that you would be, you would be better off to resolve in FY 17. So, I'm not saying 100% of them, right? So, I mean, there, there are a number of them that, yes, you are better off resolving them before you finally close. You know, some of the, some of the oldest items, you know, I would recommend that, that they just get left. I mean, they will be resolved, right, but, but they're not necessarily need to be buttoned up before, before the close. You know, that, that's, again, I revisit my comment about, you know, talking to your auditors, Resal and Clark, you know, about, about this list of deficits. They would be far better positioned to speak to maybe prioritizing them in terms of, you know, what should try to be resolved prior to the close versus, you know, what may be able to be deferred FY 18. You know, for me, I personally don't have the institutional knowledge, and I know, you know, probably, maybe, I know Derek doesn't either, on what some of these items are and how they occurred. And so, I think it would be prudent to take a look at this list and work with the town's auditors to come up with a priority list and identify which ones need to happen now and which ones can happen as part of, say, an FY 18.
Okay. So, any other questions about this? One more, and let's move on. I did look at you. One more, and let's move on. Because I don't, I don't, I, I don't want to keep rehashing this.
No, I was, I was going to say, I agree with you, you need to make sure that you maintain the focus in regards to getting the tax rate set. That's the, that's the, the path we need to take. And then to build on Mike's, you, you do need to have a plan moving forward in regards to how we do the business. And I think a critical part of that plan is, is because we've had a number of plans, is to, at some point, whether you do it through consensus or by committee, is to set up who owns it. There needs to be ownership and accountability, because if there's no ownership or accountability, then you can just keep formulating plans until the cows come home, Darryl, and, and they, they just.
And who owns this 10-year-old deficit?
Well, that, well, I'm not, well, when, when you speak in those terms, as Justin had just said, you can't close the books out unless you've got this thing balanced. So, we've closed the books out for three years, and yet we're still kicking that can down the road. So, which way is it? Are we closing the books and setting a tax rate and starting at a level base? Or are we kicking the can down the road and we still need to solve it year after year after year? Because you can't have it both ways. It's got to be one way or another. So, we are either resolving 10-year-old issues by throwing money at it and balancing the books so you can move forward, or we're, we're balancing the books with the intention of kicking the can down the road. So, who owns it? We own it, but once you assign it to somebody, they inherit the sofa, and got to fix it.
Right, and we'll resolve what we can, and, you know, I don't think we could resolve it all. And, and let me, I would be remiss if I didn't say that Marlene and the, and the financial team has been working on this. They meet weekly, they've been talking about this. this. This is not, this is something that they're, they're immersed in the middle of it. Derek and Marlene and Laura Lee and Jenny, everybody's been working towards this goal. And so it seems like every time we have a meeting, we have to change things slightly. Now we're gonna bring the auditors in and, which, which is a great, great suggestion. We're, so, we're, we're getting there.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, I agree.
So, let's move on to, do we wanna continue to talk about how we're gonna fund the three hundred and five?
We have to.
We have to.
Have the conversation.
So, so...
But, excuse me, I'm sorry. So, well, we can talk about the funding and then eventually those are gonna turn into our articles.
Yes.
Okay.
What are all of our options?
Options for funding? Well, we talked about the stabilization, the two stabilization funds. There is, and again, that's a decision of the Board of Selectmen, sixteen thousand dollars was appropriated from free cash at the May Annual Town Meeting to fund a feasibility study. That project has not started.
Feasibility, what was that?
Feasibility, I'm sorry, feasibility study of the upstairs museum council on aging senior center. And I believe also for the back of this town hall.
Yep.
And if there's a reduction to the operating budgets.
How about closing out, how about closing out that revolving account? You said there was seventy thousand dollars in there.
Actually, there is an article on the warrant, a proposed article to abolish that revolving fund. We don't have to take it up now. I don't believe we do, but, you know, it's...
Well, it's seventy thousand dollars less than...
If we would have do it now, then...
We wouldn't have to take stabilization on it.
Yeah.
Right.
To the two to seventy grand.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's be fair. I mean, you gotta, we have to look into that because just because we abolish it does not mean that we can use that money
Correct.
Automatically. And, you know, and my assumption always is, in cases like that, that usually falls to free cash and then you decide what...
And Derek and I had a conversation about that. You know, what are our options for, for that? If we abolish it, does it, you know, have to get closed out to the general fund or can we reauthorize that?
Right. And who do you talk to to figure that out?
Well, that's something we could talk to the auditors about or even Justin. We could have a discussion with Justin about it.
Right. Cause that would give us an additional seventy thousand dollars that we could put towards this three hundred and five. That's a lot of money.
Wasn't there also a discussion in the budget about, and it looks like you're looking for grocery list items, just little pockets here and there through the budget. Wasn't there a, a small amount of money set aside for additional staffing in here that was gonna be closely monitored if somebody needed a extra person here or there? Is that gone or is that?
That's...
That's gone?
That, yeah, that's getting pretty well eaten up. That was thirty thousand dollars.
Was it thirty? I don't know what it was and I don't know if it was used or not, but...
Right.
It has been used.
And Finance Committee, we haven't talked about it, but we, we, we have, what do we have in our, in our budget, in our reserve?
Not very much. We cut it back every year. Seventeen thousand?
No, we have more. No, no, I don't, I don't, do you know what we have in Finance Reserve?
Twenty-five thousand? Finance Reserve is twenty-five thousand.
I would pony up some out of overlay, but just with the risk and liabilities that we have out there, there's really no overlay money to turn back over either to help. I know that we've been able to push some back here and there, but I don't think we're gonna do that.
So, you know, I would encourage Marlene and Derek to keep looking. Maybe there's small pockets, but I think generally we have to come up with, how much are we, are we gonna take it all from stabilization or do you wanna, you wanna hit people with a one and a half percent budget take or budget reduction? That seems kinda rough to me at mid-year. And I understand the pains of taking it from stabilization, but...
Well, another option, you know, be to use the scalpel and, you know, Marlene and the select board go through each budget with each department and, you know, maybe some can spare more than others. I mean, I would look closely at the DPW because obviously a large, not that it's anyone's, you know, they couldn't plant for snow and ice, but they have one of the biggest departments. Well, I know, it might not necessarily be fully willingly, but they can explain what they have left and how they plan on spending it. It's an option instead of doing it across the board.
That's what I was going to say. If you sat down with department heads and planned out the rest of the year prudently.
What if we, what if we had a short-term borrowing?
I actually thought about that today, but then my worry is, we do a short-term borrowing based on, based on our ability to pay it back once we get free cash while...
Or you do it over, you know, three years or something, or five years. I mean, it's, you know, it's a...
Keep money.
It's an option. And that way, that way, you're preserving, we're preserving our stabilization accounts. We're preserving our budget and we're basically saying, hey, listen, you know, we gotta make up this deficit. We're gonna borrow the money, we'll pay it back over whatever sixty months or whatever. And in the meantime, we're gonna work our tails off to try to replenish that, that deficit funding that we, you know, that we're saying we're in and use that to prepay the loan though.
Or can I, so, Justin's sitting here, we might as well...
Justin, can we borrow it or is that not...
How would that be looked upon?
So, I mean, borrowing would help you for short-term cash flow issues, right? So like, so for example, by, you know, the issue of issuing the tax bills, you know, late and then subsequently not being due till later in the spring. I mean, borrowing would, you could borrow against that. I mean, if you, the problem with borrowing is you have to collateralize something against it. So, you know, I mean, you're, you're borrowing to cover, you know, a deficit. So, you know, what is the asset that the town is pledging?
The stabilization.
Stabilization and town hall.
Right.
Those equal four hundred thousand.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that you can't find a buyer for that debt somewhere, but I mean, usually it's, I think that would have to be something that'd have to be researched. I feel, I feel less than optimistic that...
Laura Lee, if you had to go out and borrow some money to cash flow purposes, if you don't have the tax rate except, I mean, what are the, what are the conditions of that law? What's the collateral?
We're probably not looking at that.
I know, but if you had to?
Well, if we had to, then I would do probably a tax anticipation note, which is called like a tan, is what I would do then. But I don't anticipate that.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying, you know, it's a similar kind of...
All right. I just, I just have one comment if I could, Darrell, on that. Wouldn't we be better off using the two, a combination of the two stabilization funds? And if we ran into an issue where we would normally go to stabilization, then we borrow?
Right.
Because we might not have to do it at all and then we're not borrowing anything. Because, and Justin certainly knows more about this than I do, but I would think that the state's gonna say, well, where'd you come up with the three hundred and five thousand dollars? And we say, we borrowed it. I mean, I don't mean to laugh, but I mean, right? They might go pretty creative, but that's not what we were looking for you to do. We were looking for you to, through your own yearly budgeting, come up with a way of knocking down that payment.
Well, at the same time, and I agree, and that is funny. Well, at the same time, I think what I'm hearing from Justin, and maybe I'm interpreting it wrong, is that, you know, borrowing's not necessarily going to be the, all that easy. And right now, we're talking about as far as collateral, the stabilization. So if we then spend the stabilization and then need to borrow, what's the collateral, you know, then? So that's my concern. What I'd love to see, if possible, and I know it'd be hard, is if we could come up with a hundred from the departments, and I think using a scalpel would be better than necessarily doing across the board, a hundred and fifty from stabilization, you know, and then the rest from Finance Reserve, the feasibility, and then looking into this revolving account to see if there's something we could do with that. You know, then it at least leaves a decent amount in stabilization. Not a great amount, but not even hardly enough if something huge happened in this building all of a sudden.
The, the hard part that I see with the scalpel effect is ain't nobody wanna give any money.
I know.
And to be honest, we have a short window. And who are the budgets we're gonna go to to look for? The budgets that have money to do it would be the school, would be DPW. They're gonna feel kinda picked on, so to speak. So, I mean, we could do that, but in the end, that's where most of that money's gonna come from, you know? Who's our third, who's our third largest budget beyond that?
Well, I think it's what do you gain? It's not just the, the financial piece you may gain. It's, it's, it's the PR, it's the, you know, you guys have big budgets and you have big budgets because you require big budgets, right?
Cause they require.
But we're also delaying the inevitable. I mean, yeah, okay, they feel a little pain now, but we're going in the direction of pain no matter what. I mean, you know?
Well, we haven't even talked about budgeting for two thousand and nineteen. This is, this is, this isn't the indication then. It's, 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 it's gonna be a tough, tough budget year.
I mean, folks feel comfortable taking more than two hundred thousand out of stabilization? I mean, is that, is that where it seems like a lot of you are at?
That's where I'm at.
Yeah.
Justin?
So, I just, I also would like to take the opportunity to point out, you know, on the eve of however much snow we get tomorrow. So, you know, but under mass general law, I mean, you're allowed to deficit spend snow and ice, you know, in excess of the budget, with the caveat that it will be raised on the tax rate the following year. However, you guys don't have room on your tax rate to raise a deficit. So as part of this discussion, you know, you have this kind of part of the, penciled in as part of the budget, you know, up to thirty-five thousand dollars to go over in snow and ice. You know, looking at historically what you have spent, you should keep in the back of your mind that, you know, whatever the snow and ice deficit issue ends up being, you'll likely not have room on the tax rate for FY18 to cover it. Right? And so in terms of when we're figuring out what this balance of, you know, reserves and stabilization and things like that are, you know, keep in mind that, you know, you have this potential future liability as of June thirtieth that you will need to resolve. You know, and looking at this three hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about today, recall that half of it is the snow and ice deficit from last year, right? So even, even without these fund balance deficits and everything and all that stuff, you're still upside down the snow and ice number essentially. You know, so just keep in mind and talking about, you know, how you want to try to come up with the funds, you know, within FY18 and then going into your FY19, you know, budget discussions directly thereafter, that, you know, that's a component that, you know, you should kind of keep in the forefront.
So in fiscal nineteen, we either have to actually budget, actually put a more realistic number before, or make sure that we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left on the levy limit in case...
Right. You wanna make sure you leave enough room there.
In, 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 in case that kinda money gets spent. Is that accurate?
Right.
Right. And I would lean towards making sure we have it left on the levy limit. I mean, sure, if we wanna bump that from thirty-five thousand to forty or forty-five thousand, I'm okay, but I, that's...
That's, that's, sorry, Paul.
That's my two cents on that.
Agree.
So, but I guess, I guess for me personally, I, you know, I have a hard time going back to departments. We're trying to generate kinda goodwill between departments and it's pretty tough going to them saying that we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna hit you for essentially what is a three percent cut in the middle of the year. And there, most of us are gonna look at it and say, well, my problem, you know, you're, you're banging me for it. So...
It was pretty slim last year.
It was pretty, pretty slim. So, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with taking it from stabilization.
But that's, I mean, I hear you. Talking about taking more from stabilization than you came in here talking about, you know? And so it's like, okay, if we had more, we'd take more. I mean, you must have, when you come in here, figured some would have to come from departments and I don't see...
I did, because I was told...
I don't see why that changes.
I, I was told that we had two hundred thousand dollars. And my assumption was the two hundred thousand dollars was gonna pretty much get us pretty close to zero. And I thought, I mean, Brian and I had had a discussion and I had talked to Marlene about this and said, I think we gotta take the hundred and five has gotta come from, from departments. And so that's where Marlene went, went through the exercise, the one and a half percent on, on those, those items. And we can...
You only have two hundred thousand, though. There's only, only have two hundred thousand.
No, we have four more hundred.
Can we take, can we take money out of town hall stabilization for this kind of an issue? I don't think so.
Sure we can.
I thought it was dedicated to the town hall.
At town meeting, townspeople, two-thirds vote can do anything they want.
With stabilization.
With stabilization. No matter what it's earmarked for.
And so we're gonna get a two-thirds vote to move
Maybe.
Almost the entire amount out of stabilization. I mean, that...
Well, I think your vote...
Just one other issue there. I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But that two hundred thousand dollars is dedicated to the phase two or three renovation of this town hall, right? Which has gotta be done according to the states, our promise of the state by, I don't know where we're at. It was supposed to be done, I think, in September of this coming year.
September twenty eighteen.
So if we take two hundred or a hundred grand out of there, I mean, you know, we're gonna have to find money to, to, to make up that deficit in order to pay for the phase three renovation of the town hall. So I guess in my mind, that money's already earmarked for something that we have been mandated by the state to do here. So we really only have two hundred thousand dollars of quote stabilization, unearmarked stabilization.
Given, well, we can have a whole discussion about where we're going with, with town hall and how we're gonna, and how we're gonna fund that, but, you know, at this point in time, we need to, we need, we need to fund this deficit and we need to make sure that we are kinda at, at, at a whole. I mean, my hope still is that eventually we're gonna get a good chunk of free cash money. I hope it's this year. Right?
Yeah.
I, you know, I, you know, and, and then, and then maybe it goes back to the five hundred thousand dollars that we could possibly get back this year. And yeah, most of that's gonna go right back to stabilization, but at least we're going forward.
Well, in parts of the three oh five, as I look, some of the bigger numbers that I believe have already been identified are the roof and window project, the band room, right? The, the health insurance, those aren't true deficits.
Right.
So, so we're looking right there. We're looking at almost eighty thousand dollars that we know, we know is coming back out of that.
Accounting entries will be made and then they'll, they'll be coming...
That is correct. So there's, so there's...
They'll be coming back as free cash.
Right. But there, so, so there's eighty of it. And those I think are probably the low-hanging fruit, because I think those projects just kinda wrapped up
Right.
Last, last year or a year before.
When we originally started this and we were, we were looking at this deficit, I was tasked with going and finding, okay, what can we eliminate from the deficits? So that's why, you know, I found some of those things and could prove how they're not truly in deficit. But then...
But, but the state, DOR...
We're gonna gather the whole thing together.
See the whole thing as a package.
And we get that. I just wanted to, to say though, though, those are three pretty large projects that we know it should be pretty much turning right around and coming back to us.
Except, at the same time, we don't know, we don't know as far as what else is gonna be coming out of that, you know? Like what from, you know, what expenses even for fiscal year eighteen that hasn't been reconciled yet are we missing? You know, I mean, we're six months behind and so, and we would presume nothing, but a few months ago, a week, a month ago, we presume that we didn't know that.
And you're right, Sean. We don't know about fiscal year eighteen, but we can't, I don't, I was gonna say, we can't worry about it. That was not at all what I meant to say. But we've got fiscal seventeen in front of us staring us in the face. And that's what we gotta take care of first, in my opinion. And I agree with you.
But a one and a half percent cut, and I know it's hard.
Which equals three percent.
But which equals three percent, it may be realistic for what we're looking at for the budget moving forward for the next year. And so, you know, maybe it's now through then so that we can complete the mission of getting our financial house in order so that everyone can enjoy a more stable budget in the future, you know? But we're, the town's investing a lot in getting this financial house in order and the departments need to play a part in that investment. But we're, the town's investing a lot in getting this financial house in order and the departments need to play a part in that investment, you know, at the end of the day and it's tough, but, yeah.
John's point's a good one and that, and I thought about this as well, Sean, that if you, if we made that cut to operating budgets, theoretically, I mean, if we could continue that cut going forward, that ends up being our new base going forward, that we're saving not only a hundred thousand dollars this year, but a hundred thousand dollars every year thereafter. Um, so, it's, it's not just a, you see what I'm saying? It's, it's, if you can, if you can get that little bit of blood out of the stone this year, then maybe next year, it's easier for the finance committee to, to establish that, that nineteen budget, taking that into consideration.
Yeah, but I think, for me personally, Mike and Sean, I, I would rather, just as we prepare in twenty nineteen, just say zero increase.
Zero increase still means an increase, you know, because there are some, you know, the wages and whatnot.
Retire and expenses only, cause that's all we were going to affect with.
That's all we were affecting with this.
With the one point, go ahead, Marlene.
I just, if I could respond to two, two things.
Yeah, jump in.
Uh, so, Mike, you had asked a question about the town hall stabilization fund. So, if, if the Board of Secund and Finance Committee are in agreement to transfer money from town hall stabilization, it would require a two-thirds vote. Vote would also include repurposing that money. So, you know, that would authorize you to, to use that money. Um, and then, just to back up what Justin had said and talking about those fund balance deficits, um, I, I, I agree that we, we should prioritize them. I've drafted an article, um, we certainly can, you know, eliminate some of them and, and plug in some other ones. The REAP grant has a forty-six thousand dollar deficit, forty-seven thousand dollar deficit. Um, so, you know, I, I think we, we need to take a look at, at those fund balance deficits and, and take care of the much older deficits, um, the ones that are more current. Perhaps we, um, take care of those at a later date.
I, I think it was, wasn't it the other way around? We wanna take, if it's been old and it's been there ten years and what's another year, I think, was sort of the mentality versus if it's something that's relatively new, let's, let's get it off of there.
Right.
I mean, I, right?
Okay.
Right?
So, if, if, to Sean's point, if you, if you go through and look at operating budgets and you start cutting them, I, I think from a higher perspective, you, you can kinda understand, oh, I can make up this money. But I think you have to get down to the ground floor and what are we giving up? Um, because I think that's very, very important, um, when you start cutting operations budgets. Um, are, is, what, what effect are we gonna have long-term? Are we not gonna do PMs on equipment? Do we not change the oil in the trucks? Do we not clean the town hall? Um, do we not mow something? Do we, because if, if we're, if we're close to the bone now with, with the cuts, a cut in operations, stuff is gonna have to be given up. And, and I think the townspeople need to know what they will actually be giving up in regards to services. Are we that fluffy right now that we could give up things? And what, what if it affects ambulance service or, or people manning something? Do we not put a fire truck on the road? What are the ramifications that each department's gonna have to say, I can't do this anymore because I don't have the budget to fund it? So, so I think we have to be very careful about the road we choose, um, because those ramifications might not, might solve the issue today, but what's gonna happen next year and the year after when the town hall's boiler system doesn't work?
Well, that's why I prefer a scalpel so that those questions can be answered and outlined and so that someone can then say, we got a hundred and something thousand from the budget and this is how it will affect all of you. Now, there is another option, which, you know, hasn't come up tonight for moving forward and that is, you know, uh, an override. And that's, it's, it's one or the other, though. We can't just keep avoiding it year after year, you know? And I don't think, we could hardly avoid it one more year. We've gotta make a decision at some point. Do we all collectively go to the townspeople and make this case that we need more money? Or, or do we, I, I say it has to be at least a small cut because even no cut is an increase. You know, regardless of if it's factored into this savings, it's still an increase to next year's budget. Um, you know, one or the other has to happen, though. Money's not gonna magically appear, you know?
So, where do we, where do we stand? I, I, you know, and I, the important thing for me, as I thought about this meeting, is when we go to town floor, we need to all be as unified as possible. Because if there is, if we're not unified, I, there's no way we're gonna get it. And a two-thirds vote is a tough vote to get. It's, it's a hard vote. People are, and people will ask good questions, they, you know, and they, they will expect good answers. And so, I just want us to make sure, whichever road we take, whether we cut some budgets and take some from stabilization or take it all, like us to hopefully be.
Be able to explain it.
Explain it and be as unified as possible going forward.
I hesitantly and uncomfortably could support fifty percent of the stabilization and, and really feel uncomfortable about it. But I could, you know, be a team player with that, you know? And so, that, that's two hundred thousand, um, but beyond that, you know, just don't think it makes sense, honestly.
Are you?
I'm fine taking it from stabilization. I mean, primarily because there's guaranteed money coming back. We don't know exactly how much, but large chunks.
Guaranteed, but now we're at four forty-seven. That we've guaranteed to come back.
Well, maybe so. I mean, here's the eighty-six, that's already, this is guaranteed to come back. And then there's free cash, you know, I mean, I don't really see the benefits of, of going to the departments. Um, I think the pro, the cons outweigh the pros there. I mean, I, I understand you not wanting to touch the rainy day fund. I, I completely agree in general, but in this case, I think it sort of calls for it.
I think it's pouring right now.
I think so, too. Yeah, this is the, this is the emergency.
You know, it's raining last year, it's probably gonna be raining next.
Yep, it's a lot around here.
Did we know?
I'm for taking the money from the stabilization fund with a plan to put it back. Like you say, a couple of years back, we, we said we would.
We said we would put it back.
I said, you said, and we didn't.
We haven't yet put it back.
Put it in the warrant.
Put it in the warrant.
You can't put it, no, you don't wanna put it, no. Isn't our word good enough? I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, but you have to be a little.
It's our intention.
And they could ask, but, and if somebody asked me and said, yes, the intention is still to put that money back, we have not seen that come back in free cash yet.
Correct.
As Ju, as, as Justin.
We haven't had the, the opportunity.
We haven't had the opportunity, as Justin said, the DOR continues to look at these deficits and, and limiting what they're, and subtract them from what they're getting, what we're getting back.
But now, we're at four forty-seven that we said we'd get back. And, and I don't even know that we have a high level of confidence that we're talking that amount of free cash after, especially when considering the other things, other commitments that we have to deal with related to free cash.
But we can give parts, we don't have to give it all in one, well, we can give a percentage each year for two years.
Nothing else happens.
We hope somebody to stand up in front of town hall and say, yes, we anticipate, you know, a, a, a rather substantial sum of free cash coming back. But I think it's important for the, for the community to know that there should be a plan in place to replenish what we're taking out of stabilization from all of these deficit funds that need to be looked into and, and accounted for properly. Because when that happens, then that's all gonna drop to free cash.
Or we have to pay it. It's either gonna drop the free cash or we're gonna have to pay the deficit.
Right, exactly.
Now, right now, they are holding back on us as of last few months was what, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand?
From last year.
From last year.
Last year's. Yeah, yeah, twenty sixteen.
So, so, and they said if we do this, then we would get that money, is that correct?
Uh, that is my understanding as well. After we audit.
We straighten this part out.
Right, after we do the audit.
Then we have some plans for a lot of that money related to like a s- street project that we decided not to do?
No, well, there was projects that was decided not to do, but the additional free cash was used to do some of the projects. I'm just saying, there's, there's that free cash there, that's supposed to come back. So, if you're thinking stabilization, putting some money back, we can just say automatically that money's going back to free cash. I mean, right into stabilization, that, that's half of it right there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just one thing. We just say, we're gonna do that and that's it. And then what are other free cash we get down the road, then we can discuss, uh, how that goes, if whether some of that goes back into stabilization or it goes for projects which are needed. So, I mean, that's.
Justin, do you have a sense of what we may be talking for overall free cash at the end of this? And I know it's just a guess.
No, I, I, I honestly have no idea. I mean, I can tell you what you've been deducted for over the years, but it's a little bit more complicated than that. Um, you know, it doesn't necessarily stack up like that year over year over year. So, um, you know, until, until we could do a, a full fund balance analysis for you guys, I mean, I, I wouldn't even wager a guess.
That says a lot. The guy staring at our numbers all day can't tell us, you know, ah, you know, I gotta guess or I have a sense, then we certainly don't, you know? And so, let's, at least let's not make the commitment, a commitment that's somewhat insincere because we really don't know if we're gonna do this and let's just do it, you know? But to get up there again and say, we're gonna get that money back. We just said that two years ago with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and didn't get it back, which was a huge percentage at the time of that account. And now, we're bringing the account down to zero.
But I, I think it is sincere, Sean. We're, we're not, I, I mean, I'm sincere when I say we're replenishing it, like, but I, we can't put in what we don't have in our hands. I, I mean, part of this exercise is to get where, uh, and Justin mentioned it earlier, is to get to the point where we're not going through this again, that we don't keep getting banged for something that has been around for a few years. And we're basically, we should, we'll have it going forward when all this is, is straightened out, the goal is.
This is gonna get us there.
This, the goal is to then know basically early on in the process of this, what your expectation is for free cash before you even have finished. But we're, we're not there yet.
This is separate from fixing the issues because actually doing this, you know, yes, it allows us to, uh, do the tax rate. That's, that's a problem of its own. So, really, we're doing this while not addressing the issues, but hoping to address the issues.
We have been addressing the issues.
Well, continuing our efforts to address the issues.
And, and, and to that point, I, you know, the numbers don't say it, but I think we're better off where we are now than we were a year ago.
Certainly.
I think we're far better off than where we were two years ago.
Absolutely.
You know, so, I feel, I, I feel good about that. I feel good that we're gonna close seventeen. I think Derek, Justin, the, the whole team, Laura Lee, they're, we're gonna get that, that taken care of. May not be the end of January, may be the middle of February, but I think they're gonna, I think they're gonna get there, so.
I would like to see us if we're kinda going round robin, if you don't mind me just jumping in.
Oh, go right.
So, one of the, um, accounts had two hundred and eight thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
That's the regular stabilization.
I would suggest we take a hundred and forty-nine thousand out of that.
Oh, and are we gonna take the sixteen thousand?
A hundred, you're right, a hundred and forty out of town hall. That's, that's two eighty-nine and the sixteen from the feasibility study, which brings you to three oh five.
Okay.
That, that would be my recommendation.
I like that.
And, and with the caveat, we're doing that feasibility study for the council on aging downstairs. We, we're replacing that, those funds too.
Yeah.
I mean.
No, we made that promise.
Absolutely. I mean, the good news is the building's under construction starting in March for the next six or seven months. So, I, I don't think this is holding.
Yeah.
I don't think by that sixteen thousand is holding anything up from taking place in the future. Yes, it delays the study, but I don't think it delays any actual work or, or.
And it can be used for that, too? That's not a problem?
Is the town, as long as it's.
It will have to be repurposed.
Yeah. You gave it a different, yeah, we gave it a different name, Cindy.
Right, so, we'll give it a different name. We will say, you know, how, in, in legal speak, we're gonna take the sixteen thousand that we have not spent on, on this and repurpose that towards funding the three hundred and five thousand. Go, hold on, Cindy.
Just, I, I like Sean's idea of taking some from stabilization and so, and to not even try to ask people to give back a little bit. I mean, I think it's a lot easier to sell on town floor, too, if people know you've taken that scalpel and at least tried to get some money from different things back. Because there's things you can't take from, but everybody knows there's fat everywhere. There is, and I don't mean just in this town, I mean, everywhere in the world. And to not even try to get some of it from that, I, I think we're asking a lot of townspeople to vote for. And we're supposed to be working for them, so why won't we even try to?
And that is for cash, right? I mean, most of that money is money that was unspent. And so, you know, I mean, to ask for some of that now doesn't seem terribly unreasonable. Uh, but I'd also suggest to your plan, Brian, whatever we have in finance reserves should come before stabilization, I think, loses money. I mean, you know, especially at this point in the year, just seems like we could, uh, take that twenty, maybe lead five in, in stabilization. That's twenty less we have to take from stabilization.
Yeah, would, and I'm just throwing this out because you guys know more about it than I do, but wouldn't it behoove the finance committee to have something there because you guys are in charge of that by yourselves? So, down the road, if something comes up, somebody needs a couple of grand for something, I, you know.
It's certainly a rainy day fund for the end of the year.
Yeah, those last minute transfers that need to take place.
Let's just look at it, let's say you're a twenty-five thousand dollar bill and you've spent your reserve fund and now you have to have a special town meeting to even get it to money.
Successibility.
Well, to, to Sean and Cindy's point, what if, and, and, what if instead of taking three percent, which essentially is what we would take, and what if we cut that in half?
Should you draft a letter and ask?
So, so instead of taking one and a half percent technically, we take point seven five from budgets.
I support point seven five from budgets across the board and then the rest from stabilization and feasibility.
So, that would be approximately fifty thousand dollars from budgets? Is, is my math approximately?
Yeah, approximately.
When do you need to know the articles, Lydia?
Um, the warrant has to be posted a week prior.
One week, not two, one week.
Fourteen days prior.
Marlene, when do you have your department head meeting?
Uh, we have a department head meeting a week from tomorrow, next Thursday.
Okay.
Okay.
Lydia, when does it have, or somebody verify?
Yeah, I'm, Marlene, it's a special town meeting.
Fourteen days prior.
So, the tenth, that's a week from today.
Right, because we were going to meet on the ninth, so we could.
So, we can, so we can wait, so.
The town meeting is fourteen days prior.
So, do, do you wanna take, take a few days to look at some of the different options and come back a week from now?
I'm not gonna tell another department that we're cutting, I, I would say it's all or none. That's how I look at it.
Departments?
Yeah. And I, and I, you already heard my suggestion, which is none at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you. I mean, I would, I'd be, of course, open to a letter going out saying, hey, we're under this situation here. What do you got, which, you know?
Start there, yeah.
Some departments are already at zero.
I mean, if you came up with the fifty grand, yeah, I'm comfortable with however you come up with that from the departments. So, you know, if there's a better way to do it, if there's ten thousand on something that could be maybe planned on being spent next year, you know, that, I think there, there's gotta be a way. I mean, we're, we're talking pretty large budget to come up with fifty thousand. I manage a relatively small budget, I guess, compared to this and get three, mid-year, three percent cuts, five percent cuts to my contract and, and make it through. You know, it sucks, but actually, it's happened pretty consistently, you know?
Ed, we haven't heard from you.
No, I've been, I've been listening. I mean, it, we have such a short window here and, and that's what makes it so hard. I mean, by the time you get everybody together, we're gonna miss the opportunity for a town meeting. So, it's, it's like, I, I, I don't think we, I, I think the next, next budget, we're gonna have to probably go back to the departments and say, look, you know, we, you may be facing a, a small point seven five or something, but, I mean, at this point, it's.
Which is just weeks away, anyway.
Yeah, and I sort of see that 140 that they're holding on towards this. So I, and I know that the 140, there's another 140, which we really is true, that that's true. So maybe 200 is really true out of this whole thing. So really, we're looking at 60, maybe, so...
So, so you support taking it all from stabilization at this point?
Well, Brian has one proposal, I was gonna think about that, too. Your proposal was...
It's, yeah, it's basically taking 149 from one and 140 from the other, that's $289, and then, that would leave about $50,000 in each of those stabilization funds, by the way. And, or 60, actually. That would leave $60,000 in each of those two stabilization funds, if we did it this way. And then, and the 16, kind of off-the-top type thing, that's how you come up with the $305.
And so then there's another part of this to consider, though. If it doesn't get past town floor, we're in a worse position. So we do wanna bring the strongest proposal, the most defendable proposal, the one that can respond to people's concerns, well, did you ask a department for money? You know, and some people there might know a department that has an expense that they consider wasteful. So we are gonna have to defend this. And say we didn't ask, seems like not a...
So how many, how many days do we realistically have to get departments together?
Six.
So we have six days. Today is...
Right, so we can just schedule it.
Third, you have till the 9th, because Lydia's gotta post it on the 10th.
Right, so we need to schedule it as soon as possible.
Move forward with this plan here that you've outlined, Brian.
I don't have a problem sending a letter or asking. I mean, you know, you might get something, and that, at least we ask.
Sending a letter's not a bad idea, we can do that. And if they have anything, we can deduct it from this other amount.
But it's like, they almost have to respond, I mean, I don't know what the logistics are from, you know, from the financial team's perspective. I mean, do you need an answer by Friday, or by Monday, or early?
It would be tough, but we could ask, I mean...
And without, well, I'm not gonna say it.
I mean, if we have to come within six days and finalize it, I don't see a problem with that either. If we wanna send a letter to the departments, come back in six days, and then say, "Okay, departments did this," or "Did not do this," and then we can finalize this one thing.
Give them till Monday, the 8th, and we'll meet on Tuesday, the 9th, and we'll, we'll know what we may have gotten, if anything, and then, and then go back.
Yeah, we make every request for more money from the department when we ask. You never know.
They're gonna give $400.
So, so do we, so, so in lieu of that, do we, do we entertain motions to go with Brian's plan, and then, and also request that the selectmen send a letter to all departments, request, asking them if they have any available monies that they could spare expenses?
Well, they can, if we're asking, then they could do it from anywhere, right?
Right, if we're asking, they could do it from anywhere.
From any of their lines, I mean...
As a suggestion, if, you know, the selectman also said in that letter that this would be a permanent decrease, that could help people as well, if they think it would be permanent. Just saying, as a suggestion.
Well, another, you did, I just, I heard you say that some budgets are already at zero, and so that also suggests that we're gonna have a budget issue down the line. I mean, I imagine those budgets, they're already at zero.
Depends the budget you're looking at. You'd have to look at...
Relatively small.
Some budgets are, they get expended in the first month.
Right.
It's just the way the department operates.
Right.
Well, it'd be nice to say, "Okay, if you give us your money, we'll give it back," but you're saying, "We don't want to make that promise," right?
I think the letter needs to be carefully drafted, and it needs to explain, without being a three-page letter. It needs to explain the situation we're in, and here's what we're, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen and assessors and Finance Team are asking for your assistance in this shortfall. It's, it's not cutting your, but, you know, for the future, we'll do that later. Oh, I'm sorry, gotta have a little, you know? But, you know, if you can do it, fine, it's not gonna be held against you. If you don't, it's, I mean, we're not gonna say that, but that's the reality of it. I mean, because I'd like to think the majority of budgets, even the large ones, are put before us, and each of those departments makes their case, and that's why we approve them as a financial team, and then bring it to town floor. Not to say there's not a little something somewhere, but, you know, that would be my recommendation. A letter goes out and an email, or the email with the same thing in a letter form to make sure it gets there. And we need a response by, you know, I don't know, 4:00 PM on Monday, or 5:00 PM.
Because you're gonna vote on this on...
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
You guys coming back?
I am in Washington on Tuesday, so...
Yeah, we're gonna have the...
Well, you're talking about funding sources, you can still approve the warrant article.
Yeah, that's true.
The funding sources, the motions have the funding sources.
That can even change that night, actually, if I'm not, I mean theoretically, from the floor or something.
It has, and we've met just before town...
So, yeah, that's a good idea.
But I, but I do think we oughta generally agree in consensus tonight on...
I would agree. It, you know, it's, a united front is important. I mean, any one of us might not agree 100% with the way forward, but when we're there, you know, with the townspeople, I think we have to try to... Yeah, we looked at all these different things, and this was the best option for coming up with $305,000.
Right.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
If you're gonna send that letter out to the departments, and they do respond and deposit, and they are gonna return some of that money, just take it off what you're gonna pull out of stabilization.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
And then that way, we've got a plan forward, we're all...
Now, we can split 50/50, as we're lowering it, maybe, if that, if that makes...
So I guess, my question is...
But they would need, I'm sorry, Darryl, but they would need to tell you, right? They need to tell you what line, I mean, they, they, they just can't say, "Yeah, we'll give you $1,000."
They need to identify their...
Yeah, identify, give you all the information, and thank you very much.
Which means Tuesday morning, we've gotta pile all this stuff, so we can get the final numbers back to you guys.
Edwina?
Can we go back to a conversation about this listing? There's like $80,000, and I'm going to Justin and Derek, there's like $80,000 on that list that you already know what the pieces are, and they could be, the $80,000 could be available to lower, you know, what we take from stabilization?
After the bat, we'll get the bat after.
That's, yeah, after we can go back, and that's...
It's what's reported to DOR.
Right.
And you know this, Justin, or is this based on just Darryl's?
So the items that are in that, you know, prior deficits column, so it's actually not really so much a DOR problem, it's that, that's in your financial statements for FY16, you know, and so there's more of a process involved there. I mean, you're not, we're not gonna get those resolved by town meeting.
I always hope.
Yeah, so, I mean, while, yes, some of them has been identified as, you know, there's, there's, you know, more likely than not, a solution to them, given the shortened timeframe, you wouldn't get it resolved in time for the town meeting.
So, Cindy and Sean, can you be okay with this plan?
I always go for consensus, and this is one situation where I actually don't think I'm gonna be able to go, you know, I really don't. I don't see, even, you know, even not speaking about it, I, because of the 147, honestly, to me, it goes back to that, I did that hesitantly. I, we had a fairly firm commitment that we were going to get back to that, that next year. And even that next year, it wasn't even, you know, it's not like we fought that next year to get it back, it just didn't happen. You know, and at some point, 300 grand is just a lot of money to bring us down to almost nothing, when, yeah, this account, what if something, you know, terrible happens? And it's just not a responsible way, I think, to use, to use emergency money. Yeah, I mean, I just don't see myself going to that full amount.
What's your definition of emergency?
You know? Anything that requires, anything that requires a special town meeting, and requires money that we don't, that we don't have, but if you, if we were doing this, and we said, "We know our numbers," you know, "We actually know the numbers, we have a plan forward," but I'm not even hearing that we know the numbers, there seems to be a lot of, you know, "We're hoping, we feel like we're close," and so that's just, it's a, it's a big step to take, I could get pretty close, but really, right now, no one's saying, you know, anything towards my point, other than, okay, we'll send a letter, but the full amount you're proposing is coming from stabilization, and that's even more difficult to swallow, since that's not what people came in thinking. I mean, before we came, you were willing to do the department cuts. You actually didn't know we had as much in stabilization. But now you're not willing to even, can't do a percentage, you know? Darryl said 75%, "Okay, 0.75, okay, I can do that," you know, and now it's nothing. I don't think I can go there, but that's okay. I mean, I think we can still go with your votes, and I can choose when we get to that moment, based on what's played out since, whether or not it's something, you know, I can support at the town meeting. I mean, if something, if we get clarification on some things, then I may be able to.
Cindy?
I like the 0.75, or the point, you know, 0.75% on that. I did, because, I don't know, we come here, every meeting, spend hours and hours trying to help the town, and I would hope that the employees would wanna help the town, too. I mean, they've taken money and gotten paid, you know, for what they've done, granted. But yes, there is waste, and I think we can find some of that. I just, you know, if we're asking all the townspeople to do it, I think it should be all the town employees, too. I think everybody should be pitching in at this point, but, yeah, and I think, you know, I know anybody watching this is going, "Oh, well, they're just gonna send a letter," and I think we've already set the table, and your department's gonna go, "Oh, yeah, they're just gonna send a letter, they're gonna take it out of stabilization if we say no." So why, why should my department say yes, because everyone else is just gonna say no? I think it's not gonna be taken seriously, really, if we send that letter. I think it's a good idea, I think we should try, but I don't know if everybody will take it seriously, every department. You know, and, and I think we all know, we see things go through on the weekly warrants, they get paid every week, and you're going, "Really, we're paying for this?" You know, and so there always is stuff you can, you can do to get rid of it. There's things, you know, even without this deficit, that people, I don't, there's, I don't think people should be paying for in their departments, but I just hate to get into, further into a system where we're always making it up, and where everybody should, every stakeholder should have some responsibility towards that total in the end.
And all I would say to that is, why? They're not the reason we're sitting here tonight.
Well, we have five department heads sitting here. Are we all taking this seriously? Yes, yes.
Yeah?
No, I'm sending the letter, and they're gonna go, "Ah, nobody else is gonna do it, I'm not."
Well, they're either gonna recognize that they have a budget that you're alluding to.
Right.
If I get that letter, I'm gonna be scrutinizing my budget and looking for that 0.75%.
Yeah, and I said some people will be, but I don't, I don't know if everybody will, I just don't.
I mean, it's good to hear that, if that's the case, then this would come up with some money, and that would impact my decision at town meeting.
It's not gonna be a lot, because I have a small budget.
Yeah.
I also have a flexible budget. My budget's dependent on how many elections I have. Next year, my budget has to go up, because there's more elections next year. It's just the way, it's just the way it is.
And if every department has, or most of them feel that way, which I feel like they may, then this'll work out, you know, because we'll get the money, and then before town meeting, I'll feel comfortable that, you know, let's say we get 40, you know, $40,000, $50,000, then I feel comfortable with that process. But, you know, if, if we're doing this fully through stabilization, with nothing coming from anywhere else, other than the senior center, which is, again, money we promised for a long time, finally did, and then now are taking back, promising to do it again in the future, you know, it'd be tough. But I do think circumstances could change between now and then, that would make me more comfortable with this. Particularly hearing more firm numbers from Justin about even that 80-something grand, you know? Once we know, which, that's guaranteed money, then great. I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing it from Darryl, that he feels fairly confident.
Which 80 grand?
The, well, the 80...
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, yep. But they said it's definitely coming back.
So the $16,000 for the senior center, let's be clear, it is the only item that was funded under free cash, that none of it has been spent yet. Is that right?
I thought...
Is that right?
Was there 20 grand for the front painting that DPW has not spent? He told me last year that he still had 20, 25 grand to paint the front, but he was not doing it until after the steps were done.
There may have been an article previously voted years ago.
If, correct me if I'm wrong, so if one cent of anything that's been appropriated from free cash, or approved at town meeting, has been spent, then is that money now unaccessible, for lack of a better term? The balance of it is unaccessible, right?
Right. If it was appropriated for a purpose, if you used any of it for that purpose, if you were to rescind it at this point, it just goes to free cash.
Then you owe that, yeah, yeah.
You can't actually...
You can't repurpose it, you've gotta send it to free cash. I just wanted to clarify your statement, that's all. I just want, you know, I didn't want it to sound like we were picking on the seniors.
So, so do we ask you to send a letter to departments, and let's, next Tuesday, let's see what kind of money?
Next Tuesday, we'll see what kind of money. But at the same token, to be fair, the, I don't think the departments got us into this problem, you know?
No, they did not.
If they can help, that's great.
But I, I, I just think it's really important, you know, 'cause if, if you get up on town floor and go against what, what we're voting for, it's...
We need the tax rate.
It's gonna make a mess.
We need the $305, however we're gonna get it, and we need a tax rate.
And we can't afford a mess.
Definitely.
No, and I think eventually we all have to agree, and the majority's gonna rule on that, right? But I think it'd be nice to try this, because I think it shows good faith to the town.
Okay, I mean, I won't be here, but that's, that's no big deal, but you'll...
We're just gonna plug in numbers, basically.
Plug in numbers, that's all.
Is it okay, Darryl? Bobby has raised his hand a couple times, but...
I didn't see, sorry, go ahead.
I think to the point that the departments didn't get us into this, but at the same time, the taxpayers didn't get us into this either. So I think something that needs to be very clear, from a taxpayer's perspective, is there needs to be a concrete answer of what's the accountability, what did get us into this, and what is the plan so that we're getting out of this? And any type of concrete number that you have, or free cash that's being withheld, or anything like that, that needs to be said, and it needs to be held, because unfortunately, as much as I like to take everyone's word for what it is, history of the numbers show that we can't, and it's nothing against any person that's speaking up there. So, you know, there needs to be something concrete, there needs to be accountability, and there needs to be clear of, this is what got us into this, and not sugarcoating whatever that is, wherever it is, and how is it being fixed, and how's it being, so that come this time next year, we're not in the same place. And, and kinda to that tune, I know at one point, Sean, you mentioned a two-and-a-half override. I think if anything like this is ever out there, and you walk onto town floor with a two-and-a-half override, then watch out, you know? Because when there's this much of unaccounted for, and, and everything else, and you start talking about trying to go for that, that's, that's just wrong, and quite honestly, I think it's a slap in the face to taxpayers.
Still...
One thing that I don't think was, was mentioned, and I think Brian touched upon it, as you go into the next budget cycle, being very prudent and fiscally conservative, and I don't have the certified numbers with me, but there's gonna be some potential new growth, so if you came in with your numbers very solid, and, and then use that new growth as part of your mechanism to replenish. Again, I don't have that number with me, but maybe Marlene can have a, a off-the-record conversation with Jenny tomorrow, that might inform you as far as decisions making, moving forward.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, next Tuesday?
Yep. Uh, that's our, I mean, we, that's the latest we can do it, right?
Right, that's right.
Lydia, so...
Okay. So either, hopefully we'll generate some money from, from departments and then replenish what we don't with stabilization.
Yeah.
Um, okay. The next thing I had was just a general question. This is two thousand and nineteen budgeting. I know we already sent out a letter. I know people have already worked on depart, on, on, worked on budgets. Is it worth sending out another letter and saying, we would like a zero percent increased budget, and we would like a budget where you're taking a one-and-a-half percent cut?
Both options, yeah.
Just, I think we gotta know, 'cause, you know, my feeling right now is that two thousand and nineteen is gonna be pretty tight. Is that, is that a reasonable ask?
Definitely.
With, with, um, with, if you take a one-and-a-half percent cut, what does that mean? What services would be subtracted? I, I think you need to know that.
Right. Well, and we would need to know, just like if they come in with an increased level services, we wanna know what that means to the town with a decreased level. You're right. We, we wanna know what that means. How many less patrols do the police do, or, you know, whatever it is?
I mean, they, they do do at U, UMass a lot. They'll ask for three different budgets, you know, different cuts, 'cause they, they're not sure what kind of funding they're gonna get.
Yeah. How does this affect your, your department going forward? Um, I, I don't have a, personally, I don't have a problem with that, Darryl. I think maybe a good timing for that would be after next week. Because we're sending a letter out tomorrow.
Yeah, right.
About, so, um...
Yeah, since I won't be here next week, okay, so you guys can do that next week.
You know, two, you know, two weeks from tonight, or today, or whatever, that Monday, the fifteenth, have it go out or something.
Well, if we all...
Because, because now it's obvious that, you know, we're, we're in some dire straits, right? So we're gonna get the first one asking for help, and then they're gonna get the next one saying, listen, you know, we've, we've got to, uh, we've gotta do something.
So if we all agree in consensus, could Marlene, in two weeks, send, send that, or whatever?
I think that's fair.
We'll figure that out.
And I think we should make it clear that for those who voluntarily do the point seven-five, it's not gonna be one-and-a-half, you know, the proposed budget should be, um, one-and-a-half percent reduction from their regular budget, not consisting of what they gave back. I, otherwise, it's gonna seem terribly unfair.
Right, oh, yeah, no, no, right, right. You're, you're exactly right.
And, and it still gives departments the option to, you know, as they come in and meet with all of us anyways, to, to speak to their budget.
Right.
Darryl, Lydia had a question. Yeah.
You said you're meeting on the tenth.
Night, nine.
Oh, okay. Okay, so...
We're gonna give you twelve dollars.
What time on the ninth?
I don't know.
Six thirty again?
Six thirty.
So your plan is to sign the warrant at six thirty on the ninth?
That's our plan. Um, do we have to do something with this auditor?
We need to review that.
Are we going through the articles with the numbers left off?
Oh, do you wanna do?
Or the, right?
You wanna do the articles first?
Doesn't matter.
Sorry.
Which, when, just, oh.
Okay.
I just didn't want us to miss it, that's all.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, this is the articles for the special town meeting?
Of January twenty-fourth.
Of January twenty-fourth.
Seven PM, Smith Academy in the cafeteria. Right, Lydia?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay?
I did see it somewhere.
I don't think I have it.
I don't know where I saw it, but I saw it.
I have so many extra.
Hey, we're looking for them.
Okay.
It might be further in our, uh...
It says draft in your packet.
Do you not have, oh, you do have, yours is right there.
It looks like this. That one.
That's the one I got right in front of me. Oh.
This one here?
I just didn't go far enough.
I don't have draft. I don't think I have that.
Okay. So, yeah, it says draft, special town meeting across the top, if everyone's...
So Article One just takes the hundred and ninety-six thousand? Oh, no, it raises the hundred and ninety-six.
Right, we're, we're funding deficits.
And we're showing what those deficits are.
Right.
Medicare, treasurer's expense, health insurance, yeah. And these were all seventeen expenses.
Right, we didn't have that information prior to the Selectment and Finance Committee meeting in July to take up the, uh, shortfalls.
Okay.
So, so those are the, um...
And those are the...
Those are the depart, those are the lines, and...
Yeah.
That's the amount of money. It totals one ninety-six, two oh four dot seventy-eight.
What's been added to this, excuse me, Brian?
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm interrupting. What's been added here is inspection wages for fifteen hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Derek just made me aware of that, um, a few days ago.
Mm-hmm. And, and that's, to Mike's point earlier, is something that we do have in the revolving, but we can't get that yet, we don't believe. Correct? Okay.
Okay.
So, so when we put the article to, um, to get, oh, yeah, or take any, yeah, we don't put the, we don't put where it's coming from. We'll talk about that.
The motion.
I mean, we'll know ahead of time, but, yeah, it'll be in the motion.
So that hundred and ninety-six will be fifteen hundred dollars more than that?
One ninety-seven, seven, basically.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Article Two was deceived the town vote to amend a vote taken under Article Thirty-Seven, May twenty-seventeen, raising a private transfer fund, some money to fund fiscal year twenty-eighteen operating budget efficiency.
Right, that would be twenty-nine thousand fifteen dollars for ambulance revenue. We, we authorized sixty-nine thousand fifteen dollars from ambulance revenue to the ambulance and fire operating budget for fiscal year eighteen.
Right.
I believe that's correct, eighteen. And, um, we, that was not available. Well, four, I'm sorry, forty thousand was available.
Available, but not the whole sixty-nine thousand.
And I'm also, um...
Forty thousand that we can use towards the deficit?
No, 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 no. When we went to fund the ambulance service...
Or to put it into ambulance...
We have an ambulance trust fund.
Yeah, right.
Where all the revenue goes.
Right.
We said we were gonna take sixty-nine thousand out of that and put it in the budget to run the ambulance service.
The operating budget.
We only had forty thousand, so we kited six, twenty-nine thousand dollars into the budget that we didn't have.
Oh, okay.
So we need to raise that, twenty-nine thousand fifteen.
And put it in...
To, to fund the operating budget.
To, uh, fund the operating budget. Okay.
And also, uh, under Article Two, if we're abolishing the inspections revolving fund, then we're gonna need to fund the additional monies that are paid to the inspectors.
Well, why don't we do that in our fiscal nineteen budget, not our eighteen budget?
Because if...
Well, if they're doing the inspections in this fiscal year, and they submit, submit...
All right.
A request to be compensated, they have to be paid in this fiscal year.
So I would ask...
Correct?
Well, I would ask, then why are we abolishing the revolving funds now?
Yeah.
Because it's not being used.
Well, use it for anything that's left in this year for the next six months out of the revolving fund. That's what it's supposed to be for anyways. And then in, at town meeting in May, then we can abolish it and take the dough then.
But at least...
Or, 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 or get fit, you know, something like that. Is that, that doable? I mean, I don't know why we would abolish it and then have to turn around and say, we got money sitting here, but we abolish it. Now we're gonna need to raise money over here. I mean, if they're, if that's how they're supposed to be doing it, that, why can't we just make them start doing it?
I, I, I'm sure eighteen, we reported it twice, didn't we? We reported it twice in fiscal year eighteen. We reported that seventy thousand twice in eighteen.
Right, so by abolishing it now, uh, the revenues generated for the remainder of the year will go to the general fund versus continuing to be further segregated. So in your budget plan, you had said that the town would collect, uh, license and permitting fees for inspectional services of, I don't remember what the number is.
Right, seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven thousand dollars. However, because you've authorized revolving fund, that seventy-seven thousand dollars is not general fund revenue, and therefore is not available to support the budget.
Right.
By abolishing the revolving fund now, collections from town, the day after town meeting forward will become a general fund revenue again.
Yep.
And you'll actually be able to count some portion of it towards setting your FY eighteen tax rate. If you leave it in place, it will continue to divert inspectional services revenue away from the general fund. And coming into the spring building cycle, it would be advantageous to start directing those revenues back to the general fund, rather than, the, the balance in the fund today is sufficient to pay whatever liabilities you'll come up with for the rest of the year. So to take the step to abolish the fund now will allow you to regain some ground on that revenue stream.
Got it.
Toward your, toward your budget.
Right. But wasn't part of what was said that, but then we've gotta turn around and ask for more money for that line? Can't we just slide that over now, the same night?
So, so I, I would, I would say maybe there's a middle ground, right? I mean, use the money that is in the fund today.
Yeah.
To, to pay those obligations. Again, the, the balance in the fund far exceeds any obligation I'm up with.
And that's fine, I get all that. Uh, my concern was we're abolishing a fund with a certain amount of money that we all know is in there, but at the same time, we need more money to, to, to fund that department out of a different line. And we don't need to do that. We, we can continue to move forward once that, once we abolish it. Yes? Or am I still not getting it?
So, so, let me take a step back. So when you abolish it, whatever balance is in there will close to free cash, right? So it's not, so it's not available.
Free cash, then we gotta swing it over.
It's not available, right?
I got it, I got it.
And then the money going forward will be a general fund revenue.
Yep.
So whatever you raise for the budget, the, I don't know, what if a couple of grand or whatever it is, it will be offset by the fact that you're now able to claim the revenue. So it, it'll be tax rate neutral.
Got it.
Um, so if you're gonna increase the budget by two thousand dollars or something, you know, we'll increase the revenue by two thousand dollars, and they wash each other out.
Yes, I got it now, thank you. I was, I was thinking, if, you know, whatever, like Sean said, municipal, county.
Right.
I, I was thinking just slide it over to stay within the same department base, but it's gotta abolish it to go to free cash and then move it over. Gotcha. Thank you for the explanation, Justin.
'Cause originally, that was set up only for second inspections.
Correct.
The first inspections were supposed to go...
Their stipend, their stipend covers that.
Stipend covers that.
Right.
The second inspections were, was...
Second and third.
Were for the revolving, and it was really just plumbing and gas?
Right.
That's the history that I've come across, but I don't...
But they didn't use it that way?
No.
Wasn't being used the way it was intended.
So all the revenue was going into the revolving fund?
Correct.
But not coming out to pay, to pay expenses, right?
Correct.
Right, and it was getting closed out at the end of the year.
Yes, and then, and then the, the operation on the general ledger, which wasn't correct, was to close it out to the general fund.
Right.
That's where you get the double count.
For Article Three, aren't there more revolving funds that are not on this list that perhaps we should abolish? I remember talking about the Department of Recreation had like...
They're still spending their money.
Right, I mean, should we not, if this is how we're gonna move forward, should we not just...
Yeah, that revolving fund is working well for them.
Oh, is it now?
Yeah.
Last I heard of it.
So isn't the fire department one?
The schools.
That's based on insurance.
They have a bunch of them at the school.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's Article Three with those revolving funds?
Article Four.
Yeah.
So are we clear on Article Two? Are we all set with that?
Yeah.
Clear as mud, Marlene.
Yeah, and Article Three, yeah.
Maybe even Four as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean...
Article Five?
Yeah.
That's the sixteen thousand.
Then from that, okay. And that's the wrap.
Okay.
All this adds up to three oh five?
Actually, three hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five.
Oh. Three hundred and eleven, stop, say it again?
Three hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five, if my calculations are correct.
All right, we'll, we'll firm that up for sure, so...
You'll firm that up by next Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I guess, is, any questions on any of these articles? Generally, since they're all financial, we vote individually whether we recommend them. And I know this is a draft, but since I won't be here next week, I would just assume vote to recommend or not recommend. So what say you on Article One?
Recommend.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Article Two?
Recommend.
Article Three? That's the revolving fund?
Yeah, recommend.
Recommend.
Article Four?
Recommend.
Recommend.
And Article Five?
Yes.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Idwina, were you okay on Article Five? Okay. So by majority vote, the Finance Committee votes to support all five articles of the special town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Should we, you want us to go through the same thing, Marlene? The board's helping.
Uh, yes, absolutely, you can do that. For purposes of the warrant, but we do state whether the Finance Committee recommends.
There's a motion to accept Article One? Knowing, knowing, of course, that we're, we're figuring out the actual financial details, but, but the intent of...
Yes, of the intent.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Article Two, regarding the ambulance service, that's the twenty-nine thousand dollars we have to fund. Is there a motion to approve Article Two?
Motion to approve Article Two.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Article Three, abolish the revolving accounts, basically under the, um, other listed there.
Motion to approve Article Three.
Second.
Uh, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Article Four, um, the list of, uh, appropriate transfer for the fund balanced deficits prior capital, prop, the prior year capital projects, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those, uh, any further discussion?
Article Four is all the stuff that we...
The older, yes.
All the prior year.
Prior years, yep.
Prior year.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Five is the, um, the funding for the feasibility study, sixteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Uh, so a motion's made. Is there a second to see if the town vote to rescind the vote, uh, for the sixteen thousand dollars from free cash for a feasibility study? Council on Aging Museum and HCTV Studio will take any action there, too.
Well, I'll second for discussion on this one. I mean, we, we made this promise on the feasibility study, so can, can we get some kind of guarantee that that money's gonna go back from that, that sixteen thousand when we do get, uh, some free cash?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. And I mean, as, as much as Brian and Ed and everybody else who doesn't like that we're doing this, uh, as, as well as stabilization funds, but I think that amount, for sure, we should be able to...
This sixteen thousand, I think we, I mean, we did make a commitment in the premise.
I totally agree. I mean, we know we're getting, we, we think we're getting the eighty or eighty-five back right off the top from those other, uh, from those other... Any further discussion on that? Article Five?
No, I'll probably follow Sean's lead and abstain, though, and it'll pass.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abst, just tell, for the record. And, and an abstention, Lynda? Laura Lee? It didn't?
I'm up here.
You motioned it, you seconded it, any discussion, no, and you pray...
All those in favor of Article Two? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. I thought we did. It's nine thirty. Thank you. Yeah, we don't need any snafus going forward, more than we may already have.
So what I see left in front of us is this management letter.
Yep.
And, I've, given the time, do you wanna just take this up next Tuesday? 'Cause you guys are gonna meet next Tuesday. You're just looking for a simple vote for, Because you guys are going to meet next Tuesday. You're just looking for a simple vote for, to approve, approve this? Is that correct, Marlene?
Well, we, we need to review, we need to review it and have some discussions about our plans forward.
Can we do it next week?
Yes, we can.
Is that, I mean, I'm sorry, it's.
Yes, I understand.
Late.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
My brain usually starts, stops functioning much earlier than this, so, not that it functions very well at all. All right. And then we have some minutes to approve, but we can, we can do that next, we can do that next, next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Because you weren't.
Huh?
It wasn't on the agenda.
Okay. All right, so we'll put it on the agenda for next Tuesday.
Before the adjournment, Cindy, if you're going to do it.
Would you, folks, object to anything else on that town meeting warrant? Or do you want to just keep it to this, you know, the, the deficits and all that? The reason I, the reason I ask, and, because we talked about, some of us wanted to wait, some of us wanted to go ahead. We had voted prior at the last meeting to go to a, a single janitor as an employee as opposed to the services, or services that are nuptial here expired in October. We're going, we're going month to month with a service that no one's really happy with. And we can't move forward with hiring a janitor until the money is taken from facilities line to put into a wage line to do that. So is that something we put on this, or would you be more comfortable waiting? We were hoping to get to it, but, you know, this is all one subject. I understand that. I'm not trying to cloud the waters.
I would kind of rather wait, just because it's, it's probably a discussion that we should, we, we should have in full and given the time and.
Okay, that's the majority then.
You're okay with that?
Okay, I just.
That's the majority, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're going to have a, I, I have a feeling, not that we haven't spent a lot of time with you already this, this past year. We've got a lot more time to spend together. Any other business to come up?
Are you going to follow up with the discussion, the Maryland Ministry of Support for the Accountant?
With the what?
That you postponed to.
We did postpone that to wait until the Finance Committee was here.
Yes.
For the what?
So, so additional support for the town accountant. The conversation, Eric.
Last meeting we talked about getting extra help. It didn't happen.
We talked about it. We asked, you know, Marlene to do a little bit of research, which, which she has. I mean, I don't, I don't know how many.
implied, Marlene, that that, the fund was expended. Is that true, that the additional support, thirty grand?
Off the top of my head, I believe there's about six thousand, five or six thousand remaining.
Well. Yeah, oh, there's nothing left to sign. I mean, you can, I think you're all set. It was just that one thing on the top. So, all, all I would say to that is while there may still be monies in there, Marlene, and correct me if I'm wrong, we also still have some folks on staff, consultants, et cetera, that are, I'm, I'm not trying to talk anybody into or out of anything. I just, you know, that's as of today, January third, right? There's, there's an amount in there, but it does, we're, you know, we, we've got other obli, we've got other obligations, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So.
There are some other obligations.
It doesn't mean the need doesn't exist, it's just the funding source doesn't exist.
Finance Committee would probably agree, and we have said from, you know, many moons ago now, that, that would be a great idea. And that's kind of one of the reasons why we gave the thirty grand in the first place. If that hasn't happened thus far, then, you know, precisely to your point, it is a funding source problem.
Yeah.
So.
I think we need a bigger picture plan here. You're, you're going to the town with three hundred and five thousand in deficit, and then you're going to turn around and ask for positions right after you ask the departments to make a cut? I thi, I think you're looking for a public hanging.
No, I don't think I was looking for that. It's when that thirty thousand went in there, it was supposed to help, you know, all the offices and so forth. The accountant's office hasn't gotten anything, and the report, there, the report for, the audit for two thousand and sixteen, both said the accountant's office should get some help, and the treasurer collector's office should get some help. Treasurer collector's office did, accountant's office never did.
I still think your timing needs to be.
Better.
Yeah, three months ago.
No, it's not timing, looking for money there. It was, that's what that fund was set up for. And last week we discussed, yes, use the money in that fund for that.
Right, and I understand that, and I believe Sean gave me the guarantee that that money would be closely watched over the course of the year, so that if you could do that, you had the poetic license to do it. But to go to the town floor and ask for a janitor that's going to be full-time and, and somebody that's going to be full-time.
Oh, we're not, no, we're not talking, we're not talking about that, and that was.
But, but that's going to add benefit packages and risk liability.
It's not, it's not full-time, and it was going to be the money that was for the contract service to be used for a janitor instead.
I, I just think that your timing needs to be.
Well, we've already discussed that wasn't going to happen. We're talking about the accountant, which we talked about last week.
I get, I get that, but I was just kind of coupling things where you decoupled them.
I think the accountant is ten.
That's why we brought it up that way.
Are we, we're talking ten for the accountant?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, if there's anything that we could do with the funding that we do have, I would be absolutely all for it.
Yeah.
That's what we discussed last meeting. I, I think you were here, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I was, and that's what I said then.
And I know we're looking for.
How do we move forward from there if you're saying, if you're pointing at me like that? So what's the next step in which case, Cindy?
What?
What's the next step? But we're talking about it. Finance Committee has said, yes, here's thirty grand to do that. That hasn't been done, so what's the next step and what are you truly asking?
Marlene, what are you looking for with the position?
I'm not following you. I said that she was looking for money because we were hoping to help both offices.
Do you not have enough money?
I don't know what you're asking me.
And the thirty grand?
No.
You know, I, it's questionable.
Right.
We're, you know, we're looking for probably something for twenty.
Reserve, essentially.
Oh, no, I'm not asking. No, no, I'm not asking.
It's there to use because it was supposed to help both offices.
Yeah.
And last week, everyone agreed, yes, use the money that was in there to help the accountant.
Yeah.
And then now she's come back and said it doesn't look like there's money there.
Okay, so, yeah.
And that's what.
Well, funding could be an issue.
Yeah.
Right.
Able funds could be an issue.
She thought there was more, but bills came in in the meantime.
Yeah, right.
So there's no new money.
And just to be clear, this isn't to.
Nothing to do with new money.
You know, this next comment isn't to indicate that there isn't a need, but I just want to clarify that Derek has received help and that's been through basic.
Yeah, Justin is in the office.
I know you're talking clerical, I, I, we just need to, you know, we just need to make sure.
Yeah, he's not in the office. He's advising the town.
I understand that, but I just wanted to clarify that assistance has been given, not, not exactly the day-to-day, but.
I just want to point out that you guys are asking me to take care of unreconciled revenue, keep seventeen going. I have departments that ask me to, CPA's looking for balances, so that's going to take some of my time. I'm just getting pulled in many directions, and, and there is only me. And I'm certainly here to help, and I, I will go to task on whatever you want me to do. But I, you need to understand, it's just me. I'll, I'll do whatever I can do, but I can't do three simultaneous tasks at once to, to meet all your goals.
That's all. I mean, that seems like a management issue as far as the budget goes. I mean, we gave, we gave the money, you know, I mean, so you got to figure out how to meet the various demands of the money before it's too late. And I, you know, and Darryl, I think you should feel free over the course of a year, and, and maybe you have, and maybe we just haven't heard it, to say, you know, you guys said we were going to get some money for help, and I haven't gotten my help, you know, and my mom says a closed mouth doesn't get fed sort of thing. But, you know, just be clear with that, so then we could have been having this conversation before all the money's gone. And then now, how are we going to get the money?
This conversation's been had pretty much since I've been here, then, you know.
And we gave them all.
I need.
Yeah, we didn't fund it directly.
My money was with Justin to bring him in, to get help.
Help out, to get him going, so, I mean, it has been used.
It has been used in.
Maybe not enough, maybe, maybe we need to increase it or whatever, so.
Yeah, and it, the difficult part is there's no money.
Right.
You know, I mean, I.
Your task to get done, and your funding source to get them done, there's no funding. And, and I totally understand that.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm, I'm doing the best I can with what's, what I'm tasked to do. I just can't do it all.
The conversation was, once everybody catches up, then we should be better sailing, right? But we haven't caught up yet. We're, we're closer than we've ever been, but we still need, we're on a twenty-yard line. We haven't gotten that touchdown yet.
Okay, Sharon, Sharon had one question. I'm not sure who it was for, or, or comment.
That I think that, I'm kind of sorry, I'm stuck here. That with, with what role I have in my schedule, I only work thirty-five hours a week. I don't want to overstep my treasurer, tax collector roles, but I have said that I'm a resource that can help Derek that's here and not hiring somebody external. I don't know how much money is left in there, because that's not my place to know, but I am offering that out there, that if he needs clerical work and literally like just pulling files, I'm already familiar with all of these different things. You have a resource here that you, you have available to you. Not saying, you know, like I said, I don't want crossover and step where I'm opposed to. But at the same time, I live in town, I want to make us all succeed, so we can stop having these conversations every few weeks. And that, you know, yes, Justin's helping Derek, but he needs some day-to-day in his office help, uh, here. So if that's something that everyone felt comfortable with, and we can make that work with a little bit of money that you do have left, Marlene, I would.
I don't know, that would conflict with the accountant's office, wouldn't it? The treasurer's office? Staff from the treasurer's office would be accountant's.
You would have to look at that.
Yeah, I, I think that could be a conflict.
It could be, that's why I was saying, but I don't.
Appreciate it, I really do, but I think it could be a conflict.
Pulling your files, that may, may be an option.
It's worth looking into. I mean, you need some creative solutions.
Thank you, Sharon, I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other business to come before this meeting?
No.
Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Want to try to come up with something?
Yeah.
Second, all in favor?
The board wants to approve this letter with the changes?
Why don't, thank you, guys. Marlene?
If you want to do this.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't know if you want to do this.
Well, I just think we have, I, I think we should.